Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the council chambers and to the last council meeting of this term of council. For this evening's, we always start out our meetings with the singing of our national anthem, and we sometimes have a guest soloist or a group of people. And we have a very good choir tonight, actually. It is you. So I invite everyone to stand, and we will sing our national anthem. (Music) (Singing) Oh, Canada. Oops. Okay. I was just going to do acapella. (Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our songs command. With holy hearts we see the earth, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Since it's the last evening, I'm allowed one mistake. And we sometimes have singers coming in and singing acapella. And I was starting it out that way. It's been moved by Council Fernandez that the minutes of the regular meeting held September 15th, 2014, and special meetings held September 15th, November 4th, and 10th, as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. However, before I call for the vote, there is an amendment. Mr. Wilmer, just get your microphone on. Okay, Mr. Wilmer?
Thank you, Mayor Zaire. I would request that council consider amendment to the September 15th minutes for special council. The minutes inadvertently omitted the mention of a third caucus item, and this had to do with a personal matter, and notice was circulated to the members of council on September 12th, which satisfied the notice requirements.
Okay, with that amendment, then those in favor of the minutes? Opposed, that's carried. The certificate of election results was, is there as communication. It has been placed on our website, as you all know, and it is there for people's reference. It's now my pleasure to make a presentation to councillor Dan Glenn Graham. He's going to stand for this as well. Councillor Glenn Graham. Dan. In four short years, you have left your mark on your neighborhood, your ward, and our city. Your involvement with the grassroots of your ward was welcomed and appreciated by all our citizens and your citizens. It's obvious that you care deeply for your neighborhood, your ward and city, and those who live there. And I could always see that you had a concern for the individuals you came in contact with, and always tried to help them, however you could. Your participation in the debates in the chamber was always respectful, whether or not there was agreement on the issues at hand. And perhaps it's the mediator in you, but your desire to always find win-win solutions to issues is very much appreciated. There was always the ability to come together for the best interest of our citizens. And one other area that you contributed to our community during the last four years was your effort to help build stronger, a stronger bond between the cities of Kitchener and Waterloo. It is that spirit of collaboration that illustrates the willingness and desire for people in our community to work together to make this area a great place to live, to work, and to play. Thank you for making that, taking your part in making that happen. And in the previous discussion that we have had, in lieu of a gift, you have chosen to have a donation made on behalf of, in your name, to the Waterloo Region Food Bank, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I have a certificate to present to you.
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate that very much.
Pardon me? Oh, I could give you the opportunity, yes. Councillor Glenn Graham, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, thank you very much. I was not sure, you know, if there would be an opportunity, and I appreciate that. I wasn't sure if it would be at the end. I remember attending the last council meeting before I got onto council, and I remember you going around the horseshoe to those councillors at that time, and so I do appreciate this. So, it's a real honor, one of my greatest privileges, to have served as a councillor with the city of Kitchener and Ward 10. We have four great neighborhood associations: Central Frederick, the Auditorium Neighborhood Association, Mount Hope Write-Up, and the Old Berlin Town Neighborhood Association. And it's one of the most engaged and active neighborhoods in the city, and I'm really proud of that. That's demonstrated by the fact that it had the greatest voter turnout in the last election, and prior to that as well, very high voter turnout. I think that's reflective of the fact people are really plugged in and engaged, and the number of events that we hold in the ward has been reflected in the fact that for the last four years, it's won the Festival of Neighborhoods Ward Challenge. And I think that's, there's a real message there about trying to encourage people to vote, but how do you get that to happen? It doesn't happen by itself. You need that engagement, you need that caring and that passion, and I think that's our job, is to engender that and encourage it at every turn. And I'm so glad that we're doing things like the youth participation challenges, and one of my greatest happinesses is to see the My Ideal City carrying on here, and that's something I've been proud to, to help create, and I hope that continues. And I do appreciate the partnerships that have been created, including with the Kitchener Citizen and with the neighborhood associations. Some of the great examples of local leadership through the neighborhood associations are the Frederick Art Walk, the Honer Porch Party, and I would encourage you all to go. Waterloo has their porch party, but I think that we're blowing it out of the water. The Lancaster Street Calming, those little signs, "Drive Like You Live Here," something impromptu, but it really had an impact. The gazebo that the Auditorium Neighborhood has created, and the Rangers kicked in $25,000 because they're so well organized. They turned a $10,000 festival of neighborhoods grant into a gazebo, which is fantastic. And the Head Avenue Lantern Walk, the, there's a potluck dinner that's celebrated over 400 weeks straight, and I've delivered certificates at the 300 and 400-week mark in the area on Cedar Street. I think that's incredible. And that's intentional community, and that's what we can do without a lot of cost when you bring people together. There's also an international potluck that's happening with the Extend a Family organization that I helped to connect. The Yeti Cafe Ping Pong Tournament, I think that's great, that businesses are doing grassroots thing. The Painted Intersection that's going on in the Mount Hope Write-Up. You don't have to always, you know, have all the money and all the answers. You can pilot things like the Painted Intersection. And the community gardens, both at Weber Garden, Weber Park, and the Guelle Street Park. Community gardens create magic. And one thing I'd like to see in the future is the possibility of pizza and bread oven at a park, and I might be delegating to council in the future on that. But leaders and opportunities are everywhere, and that's one thing that I learned, is not just around the horseshoe, but we have tremendous leaders in our community in every sector and throughout our neighborhoods, and when we tap into those leaders and look around for opportunities together and encourage those opportunities, there's amazing, amazing things we can do here as a city. So in closing, thank you to all the leaders in our community, including the people here at the city, who find a calling and service. You don't just do a job here, you've found a calling to serve our city, and thank you for all that you've done. And thank you to all the local partners, like people like organic things that are happening, like night shift and summer lights. And thank you to all the city councillors here for helping to have a great term, helping to keep the city on the right track. And I really do appreciate all the memories that have been created here and all the things we've done together. I think we've, we've had a really good term. And so with gratitude to everyone, and with best wishes to the next council for a very productive term, and taking advantage of all the leadership and the opportunities and the engagement out there, and encouraging that out there. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor Vanadavich.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's been left to me to express a few words and some thanks to you for your 26 years of public service to the citizens of the city of Kitchener. It was back in 1985, when you were first elected as the councillor for the Chicopee Ward, a role that you held for nine years until 1994, and then returned to this council chamber in 1997 as Kitchener, what became Kitchener's longest-serving mayor, serving until 2014. Your first nine years as councillor were years that you took very seriously. You became very engaged in a variety of committees at the city, including serving as the chair of the city's finance committee. You were a member of the City Hall Steering Committee, the very committee that actually helped bring this project to being, a project that has seen this building be in place now for the last 20 years. And very importantly, you were, you also wore a styling mustache back in the days when Movember hadn't even become popular yet. But on a, on a serious note, I think your, your real leadership and achievements came to be over the past 17 years as mayor of Kitchener. During those 17 years, we saw many improvements in our communities, and here's just a few of them. Twelve community centers built or expanded upon. The Activa Sportsplex built, which includes two ice pads, an indoor walking track, boxing facility, and became our first lead gold-certified recreational facility. The Dom Cordillo Arena was expanded twice in partnership with the Kitchener Rangers. Six of Kitchener's seven current fire stations were built. The new Kitchener Market was built. Three of the city's current libraries were built or significantly renovated, and the Kitchener Operations Facility was built. But I think your greatest legacy will be the transformation, diversification, and expansion of Kitchener's economic base, and namely, I speak about the Economic Development Investment Fund, which allowed us as a community to invest strategically in beginning to transform, diversify, and expand our city's economic base over the past 10 years, and the realities, much of its success will continue to be seen in years to come. That intensification of our inner city and Kitchener's ongoing commitment to strengthen the local arts and cultures community brought a new vibe, a new energy, and excitement to the downtown. And I know that vitality and investor confidence in the downtown that you helped create, that you led to create, will have an impact for many, many years to come. Outside of the city, you also spoke, you also took a leadership role in the municipal sector in general. You were a former chair of the Large Urban Mayors Caucus of Ontario, and played an active role with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities on the Big City Mayor's Caucus, as well a group that you chaired for three years, ensuring that the city of Kitchener had an incredibly strong voice as a small community amongst some of Canada's largest cities. But I think to really reflect on the kind of impact that you had as mayor, I turned to some of the, probably wouldn't surprise you that I turned to social media and Twitter to get some of the feedback from our community when you announced your retirement. And some of the feedback that citizens of our community expressed back on that day included, "Thanks and gratitude to Mayor Carl Zaire for four years of service to Kitchener and Waterloo region. All the best on a well-deserved retirement. Strategic, fair, open-minded, progressive, compassionate, fun, intelligent, forward-thinking, listener, wise, a true leader." Thank you, Mayor Carl Zaire. "Thank you for leading our amazing city with great dignity and vision. You'll be missed. Your leadership and hard work have been appreciated. Committed to public service and strong leadership. Mayor Carl Zaire has been a blessing to our city." Thank you, Mayor. And finally, sad news, you're a great mayor and city of Kitchener is better because of you. Sure you don't want to run again. Mayor Zaire, on behalf of 26 years with the city of Kitchener, and on behalf of our colleagues here on council, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor Vanadavich. I was thinking that I would make some comments at the end of the council meeting, but I will try to be brief and make them now. They're prepared texts, so I won't wander too much in my comments. On December 1st, 1997, little did I know how my life would unfold over the next 17 years. And it has been an incredible journey, and I have many people to thank for accompanying me on that journey. First of all, councillors. Councillors over, have each had their own distinct personality and involvement. They were members of five separate councils. Thank you. Thank you very much for your support and intelligent discussion. Staff. Staff members at all levels in our organization have been responsive and very helpful to me over those many years. So thanks to our current employees, some of whom are here in the audience today, and to all of your predecessors, and even those who are not in the chamber tonight. And the third group to thank, of course, is the citizens. Citizens who supported me and put their trust in me to represent our community, both here, at home, and further afield. Thank you so very much. And as I reference citizens, I hope you'll indulge me to repeat one part of my comments that I made on November 5th at the retirement event. And it is this. Politicians often refer to constituents as taxpayers rather than citizens, and I think the time has come to actually start respecting citizens more as rational, responsible people and partners, not simply someone to pay the bills. It's time to remove that taxpayer mask on each person in our community, and when we do, we will find a citizen, a human being, a caring person, a parent, a student, a business person, a friend, a spouse, and when you look in the mirror, you will of course see yourself, a citizen. To refer to citizens only as taxpayers is diminishing the role that they play in our democratic society, and suggests they respond only to the cost of a service rather than the value of a service. So do all elected officials in all orders of government. I invite you to find new ways to engage with all our citizens, and then make the required and sometimes difficult decisions in a thoughtful and a balanced manner. And a phrase that I've used before, be bold in your vision for our community, and you will be amazed at how much better our city and region will be by the time the next election rolls around in 2018. So in closing, a big thank you to everyone who put their names forward to the public in the October election. You can be proud of participating in one of the most fundamental and critical aspects of a democratic society. Congratulations to those who were elected to the next council. You will have many issues to deal with during the next four years. You know, the emphasis was on the word "you," not me. You will be challenged at times, but by staying focused on what is in the best interest of our citizens and being true to yourself, decisions will come much easier, and I wish you well. Thanks for the memories. Thank you. And now we can actually get to the business of tonight. We do have quite a number of delegations, more than are listed on the printed agenda, the one that was distributed, of course, earlier on. So we're going to try to keep this moving. I ask everyone to stick to their time limits so that we can get through this in a reasonable time this evening. So the first delegation is Ryan Matthews. Ryan here? Can you come down, please? And this is related to Committee of Adjustment Submission, related to 2385 Shirley Avenue, item number 1-II on the Committee of the Whole Agenda. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you. I'm just here to answer any questions that council may have.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Matthews? Seeing none, you're really keeping to your time.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll bring that forward now. Is there someone wishing to bring that forward? Councillor Davie, seconded by Councillor Einidus. Those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been approved. Elizabeth Clark. She has a request to make of council.
I did send a PowerPoint. I'm not sure, is it set up or?
I think it is.
And do I click this?
Just, there'll be, okay.
Thank you. Thanks to Mayor Zaire and council for allowing me to be here tonight to talk to you very briefly about the Light the Night initiative and to ask-
Then you have, you have five minutes to make your presentation.
I will meet it. And to ask for the city's participation in this. Light the Night is a national initiative this year because December 6th of 2014 marks the 25th anniversary of the Cold Politechnique massacre. I do see that there's a typo in there. My spell checker told me that there was, but I thought it just didn't read French, but apparently it does, and I just don't spell French. I did send, I did hand out a fact sheet that hopefully you have in front of you. I will go through it, but I think, just to bring to your attention that based on police reports that we have from the Waterloo Region Police Service, as well as statistics that are provided by a number of sources, we estimate that there's something over 24,000 domestic assaults that happen in our region every year, and something in the area of 6,000 sexual assaults. Clearly, violence against women is still with us even after 25 years. What's happening with Light the Night is municipalities across the country are choosing buildings and landmarks, and they're lighting them up in red for the night of the 6th or for a couple of hours of the night of the 6th. The number of municipalities is increasing every day. I just learned on Friday that Cambridge is going to be lighting its city hall. I just, will give you a little summary of some of them. Calgary's choosing to light up its bridge. Montreal has a few locations that it's going to be lighting up, as does Toronto, one being the CN Tower. Peterborough is participating. Ottawa, not to be outdone by Toronto, also has a number of sites that they are going to be illuminating. Hamilton, Edmonton, I don't know what it is with bridges in Alberta, but that's what they like to light. Vancouver, and many, many more, including, as I've said, Cambridge. I will be asking Waterloo as well for their participation. I just pulled this picture off the website. I apologize for the quality. I just want to ask you to use your imagination and see how beautiful and dramatic it would look against a night sky lit up in red. But we aren't specifically asking for city hall to be lit. We recognize that there may be various reasons why municipalities would choose other landmarks. We don't care. We just would like your participation. To show Kitchener that we do want to see an end to violence against women. Thank you.
Questions? Councillor Vanadavich.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in tonight with, with the presentation. I, I agree with you. I think it would be great to see us participate in, Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time. I'd like to ask a question of staff and then make a motion in regards to this.
In fact, I'm going to interject at this point in time with the delegation there because Mr. Whitmer has some information, and that may eliminate some of the questions or discussions at this point. Mr. Whitmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've had an opportunity over the weekend to take a look at what we would be able to do here at the city of Kitchener, and it looks like the whole of the city, city hall would not be, there's some technical issues, but we're looking at using the face of the cube that is front on King Street. We think we should be able to be, able to do that, and that shouldn't take a whole lot of effort and a whole lot of technical expertise beyond, because there is a projector that is working there. So we're pleased to be able to do that if that's what council wants.
Okay. I just wanted to have that information put in. Do you have a further question or?
Well, of staff, but I'll wait till the appropriate time to do that.
All right. Councillor Fernandez.
Thanks, Elizabeth, for coming in and talking about this, and my question essentially was going to be the same as staff, so I do appreciate you giving us some visuals to see what can be done, and it sounds like this is a very real possibility, so thank you for coming in.
Okay, those are the only questions. Oh, sorry, there is one more, I think. Councillor Singh.
Yes, Elizabeth, thank you. Similar comment that appreciate you coming and challenging us to do something the same. And I'm glad that the cube was referred to. That was going to be my question of staff as well, but I wanted to take the opportunity to ask you, do you think that would be appropriate, that would send a significant message that pretty much what your, your objective would be?
Yeah, I'd be very happy with that. It's highly visible, and that's, that's what we want.
Perfect. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to you, Councillor Vanadavich.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too agree that I think the, the cube would be a great building to, or a great portion of the building to light up. I think the other one, if it would be relatively easy, and I'd maybe ask staff to, to look at it, I think if we could put just a red filter on the, the lights that light up the clock tower on the outside, that's probably the most significant and noteworthy structure in our, in our city. I mean, it makes up our logo and everything, so I guess I would just ask if that would be relatively easily and without significant cost that that be considered as well. So I would, I would move, move those two.
Could the, the motion be directed to staff to do what they can in terms of the, these locations?
Yeah, so exactly.
Rather than saying, do it specifically in case there are some other issues?
One and/or both.
Yep.
Yep.
Seconded by Councillor Singh. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those in favor? Opposed? There's one, there's a delegation here just in support of item number three of the Heritage Committee report. This is 1805 Huron Road. If there's going to be major discussion on it, I'll hold off, but just hang on a second. Just hang on. Just hang on. If we can deal with that one very quickly, I think we probably can. Okay. Karen Doan?
I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. I'm property owner of 1805 Huron Road.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Doan? Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, thank you. Just a question regarded to the property. You live in that location?
No, I don't. I had been renting the house out and the barn has been empty for years. Property standards from City of Kitchener went through the house at the tenant's request and I've had an estimate to bring it up to standards. I'm looking at about $150,000 and it's, there's no value in doing that.
Okay. Can you give me some rough idea of what the concerns are with the house in terms of repairs?
Yes, the biggest concern, the most expensive repair is there's moisture getting in the basement and it's an old stone foundation and that, you don't know how much you would end up spending in order to fix that problem, but it certainly wouldn't be cheap no matter what would be required. And also the septic system isn't up to standards and that's very expensive to replace as well. So those are the biggest ones, but regarding the barn, it is just falling apart.
What's the age of the house?
It's pre-1900. The house is at least three different houses that have been put together and I don't know if any of them are in the original location. So there's one section of the house that is supposed to be of log construction and that is the only thing, well, and then there's some window that's been covered up that has been noted as well in the person who did look at it several years ago. So when they did put it on the heritage registry, one of the comments they made was it was kind of hit or miss whether it made it or not because the heritage value was so minimal. Michelle Drake's here. She has gone through the, both houses on the property too, if you would like to direct questions to her.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to understand from you what your concerns were with the property and certainly I would expect that a house that's pre-1900 would have a number of issues with it just in pure fact that it's old and it needs ongoing upkeep. I believe we had an email from KLG on this item?
Yes, we did today. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I want to make some comments about this one. I have a chance.
Any other questions for the delegation? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Counselor Fernandez, you want to put your microphone back on?
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to bring up the email that we got from KLG earlier today with regards to this particular, I apologize for not finding it quickly enough. She made some good reference to the fact that there is some historical significance to this location and that the comments by the owner were regard, at heritage, related to concerns about renting out the property. I wasn't there, so I don't know if that was the case. But what I really would like to understand from our staff is if this site is from, it predates the 1900s, and we've got many houses and buildings that predate the 1900s, why have we not been on top of the property standards to make sure that this has been kept up and in good condition?
You press the microphone there, please. Okay, go ahead.
Through you, Mayor Zare. The upkeep of property standards with respect to heritage properties is only in effect for designated properties.
Okay, but this one is listed, right?
Correct.
Okay. And as I'm looking through the email, I think that there's, there seems to be some here, it seems to be something that could fall within the cultural heritage landscapes designation. Has that been considered? That site been considered to be on the cultural heritage landscape listing or not?
The site was not identified as a cultural heritage landscape and the recent study completed.
Okay. I looked at the pictures and I mean, maybe it's not, I'm certainly not a heritage planner, so I don't have the expertise that you have. When you viewed the site, were there specific items or issues around that property that you saw some value in or did you see that it had been pieced together and that it had lost its integrity?
In general, the site had lost its integrity. The primary interest had been the suspected log house, but upon inspection, there is some suggestion that there may be portions that are log, but definitely not to the extent that were originally anticipated and also evidence that the building had been moved. So as the owner had indicated, there's sort of three sections of the building, none of which may be original to the site. So those things combined diminished the integrity and the cultural value of the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your answers.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Just one quick question to staff. This property is outside the countryside line. Is that correct?
Could someone comment on that? Go ahead.
Yes, I believe it is outside of the countryside line.
I just wanted to make that clear and I'd be prepared to move this recommendation. I know it's in Counselor Etherington's Heritage Committee Report, but I'd like to move it as the representative of the area and having spoken with Ms. Dane on numerous occasions about this property and the problems that it's having. And I think having Heritage Kitchener agree with the recommendation for demolish is important to follow because there are a number of constrictions and restrictions on this property. And I think trying to have it brought back up to speed is at undue cost to the property owner as well as staff have put into place a few suggestions in order to document the heritage value of this property. So I encourage everyone to support the Heritage Kitchener recommendations.
Seconded by Counselor Etherington. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Where'd she go? There she is. It's been approved. Okay. We'll now move to item 6C on the delegation, on the agenda. This is 98 through 110 Victoria Street South. And the first delegation is Owen Allerton. Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I've indicated earlier, I do have a pecuniary interest as my parents own adjacent property. So I'll recuse myself to the discussion.
Okay, thank you. So noted.
Mayor Zare, might I request that GSP Momentum present first? I believe last time council gave them the action to go and see what else they could do. At this point, they have not told us they're able to do anything further than what was presented last time, so I am interested to see what they would present.
Okay, I will, we can accede to that, but I would also, then they would have an opportunity to come back up afterwards.
Absolutely.
As well.
Thank you.
Mr. Pidgen, are you prepared for presentation? Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Chris Pidgen with ESP Group. I have a five-minute presentation and then Mike Maxwell from Momentum has a second presentation for you. I want to focus on the issues raised by the Allertons specifically related to the tower separation issue. Momentum Developments has considered and addressed all of the issues that have been raised by the City of Kitchener. We've worked closely with your city staff to address all of those issues arising through the circulation of the application. Momentum's consultation has gone over and above those requirements of the Planning Act. Specifically with regard to the Allerton properties, those houses were built in the early 1900s. Residential has not been a permitted land use for over 50 years, and that's according to the City of Kitchener records, particularly zoning compliance letters on file with the City of Kitchener. Six of the townhouses on Arthur Place are on the heritage registry. Allertons are savvy business people and they've made investments on Arthur Place. And they've since acquisition, they've made further investment through renovations to the houses. And according to the City of Kitchener records, Allertons never inquired about zoning compliance either through a zoning compliance letter, nor have they obtained building permits for the renovations that they've made. They simply have not made good business decisions. This is a photograph of the existing condition. This is the Allerton two houses looking through the trees from the Momentum property. Second photograph of the Allerton properties. Momentum has made a number of modifications to address the Allerton's concerns. They've increased the tower separation from property line. They've limited the podium height from six stories currently permitted down to three. They've replaced occupied floor space that otherwise would have an overlook into the Allerton properties with bicycle storage space. They've frosted the windows and they've offered to landscape and clear up both of the properties on either side of the property line through landscaping and fence detail. This is a cross-section of the Allerton and Momentum development. Momentum has increased the tower separation to a minimum of six meters from property line. In fact, the separation distance to Allerton is 7.3 meters. Allerton setback is 1.1 meter. Allertons do not have development rights for a tower. As of right, they can build a six-story building, but not residential. Allertons must overcome the economics of land assembly, the heritage registry of six properties, and ultimately they have to apply to council for an official plan and zoning bylaw amendment to permit development. Allertons have stated that they want council to impose a 12.5-meter setback to property line from the Momentum tower. If this were imposed, some of the most significant developments in the region of Waterloo would not have occurred. That includes these four projects in Kitchener, 144 and 155 Park, the Barrow Yards project in uptown Waterloo, and these four additional projects in Kitchener. Not one of these 10 projects can meet the 12.5-meter separation distance to property line that Allertons are requesting. Allertons have referred to the Toronto tall buildings guidelines. Those guidelines took 10 years to develop. Through extensive consultation, they were approved in 2013. There are 115 criteria for the tall buildings in Toronto. And the context, as you can see, is very different. This is a 35-story building. Toronto's often dealing with 40, 50, and 60-story towers. And 80% of the test cases in the Toronto guideline did not meet the Toronto separation guideline. Allertons have requested council to impose one of the 150 criteria in the Toronto guidelines. And Momentum meets the majority of those 150 criteria. The Toronto guidelines indicate, as guidelines, they should be afforded some flexibility in application, particularly when looked at cumulatively. I'll be one more minute, Mr. Mayor. Tower separation is not regulated in Kitchener. Momentum has increased the separation to a minimum of six meters from Arthur Place. Momentum cannot accommodate additional separation. The clergy principle applies, that is, applications must be considered based on the planning regime, time of application. This has been broadly accepted by the Ontario Municipal Board and upheld, and it's the Kitchener practice. In conclusion, Allertons do not have a right to develop a tower on their lands. The Toronto guidelines do not apply and they may not be appropriate for the City of Kitchener. We do not support Allerton's request for tower separation. We do support staff's recommendation that's before you this evening. Imposing tower separation would be contrary to the clergy principle and fairness and certainty in the planning process. And 100 Victoria has addressed all aspects of the enforced planning regime, represents good planning, and it is in the public interest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Since we're changing the order here and allowing the presentation to be made first, I think the best way would be to hold questions of this delegation until after all the delegations have been heard, because I think that there could be some back and forth on this. But Mr. Maxwell, Mike Maxwell, you can come forward and make your part of the presentation.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor Zare, members of council. I'm going to try to be brief as I'm also in the process of losing my voice, so if it cracks, I apologize. My name is Mike Maxwell. I'm a principal at Momentum Developments. I think Chris has done a good job this evening as well as in previous presentations outlining the planning merits of the project and what we're looking to achieve there. So I'd like to take this opportunity to speak to some broader implications of the project as we're proposing. Counselor Vravnavich took a little bit of my thunder earlier by highlighting the Economic Development Investment Fund. I find it fitting that later on this evening, council will be receiving information from staff on how to quantify the economic impact of EDIF. 10 years ago, council committed funds to fund catalytic projects in an effort to strengthen the local economy with particular emphasis on downtown Kitchener. The benefits being sought included employment, residential, and assessment growth. Since the inception of EDIF, there have been a pattern, there's been a pattern of employment growth in the downtown, including but not limited to the School of Pharmacology, the McMaster School of Medicine, Laureate School of Social Work, the new consolidated provincial courthouse, and more recently, the Tannery and Brightup Block, which have transformed the downtown as a hub for the tech sector and more. These developments are bringing thousands of jobs and employees to the downtown core collectively. The Tannery, 1,400 employees. Brightup Block, 875 employees. 305 Charles, 24, excuse me, 305 King, 25 Charles, and the list goes on and on. I think it's safe to say that the city's visionary commitment is paying dividends. With more employees in the downtown, there is now a growing demand for housing. The city's talent and retention strategy emphasizes the importance of providing quality housing choices to attract and retain employees downtown. The Kaufman Loss, Arrow Loss, City Centre, and our own 1 Victoria demonstrate and have demonstrated that the residential demand is growing. All of these projects have and will lead to further assessment growth in the core. EDIF's goals 10 years ago, 11 years ago, were to stimulate employment, residential, and assessment growth. 100 Victoria will achieve all of these goals. Momentum Developments' investment in 100 Victoria will neighbor $100 million. That's 120 construction jobs during the construction project. That's every year in the core. Upon completion, 100 Victoria is expected to house 160 full-time employees in its commercial component and 550 residents in its residential components. The value of these people in the core and their property will increase assessment and property taxes by $1.5 million per year. It's an extra $1.5 million coming into the city and region's coffers per year. In addition, those permanent residents, permanent employees will increase spending and have annual economic benefits to the downtown businesses of $5 million per year, also significant dollar values for our businesses downtown. In closing, these are real economic impacts of this development and the ones like it both to come and past. I respectfully request that tonight you approve this project as proposed, and I can take any questions that may be out there.
Thank you. We will hold those questions again until after we've heard all of the delegations. So back to Owen Allerton.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen-
Supporter.
Ladies and gentlemen, supporters, councillors, Honorable Mayor Zaire. When we last met on September 15th, councillor Seelock Galloway, in her reference to the Walter Street development, said, "It comes back to a matter of timing for me. Unfortunately, this matter is coming forward, let's call a spade a spade, at election time, and no one wants to alienate the residents." Well, it seems that GSP and Momentum have taken this comment a little too seriously. Councillor Vravenevich, on September 15th, you commented that there is clearly a desire to see further dialogue take place. None has taken place. I have had my team reach out to the planning staff at Momentum several times. Staff has indicated that there is no change to the recommendation from September 15th. Momentum has indicated that there is no willingness to move the tower any further. Councillor Ionitis, you commented, "Are you sure we don't have an example locally?" Well, new information has come to light. Right here in our own backyard, the City of Waterloo has just put tower separation guidelines in place in the Northdale community. And you guessed it, they now require 25-meter separation between towers. Now, it seems there continues to be confusion and misinformation spreading about the concept of tower separation. Tower separation is not tower setback. Tower separation only applies to situations where a tower could reasonably be contemplated and, in this case, is planned for on the other side of the property line. The historic building to the east of Arthur Place is not reasonably going to be bulldozed and replaced by a tower. Thus, setback from this property line is not an issue. To north, there is much broader expansive land. There are no constraints forcing a tower to be close to Arthur Place, and thus, no issue there either. However, Arthur Place is small, and without room for proper tower separation from 100 Victoria, a tower on Arthur Place is never going to happen. I have heard staff, Momentum, and GSP claim that 25-meter tower separation would inhibit future development and intensification of Arthur Place, or even the broader intensification of Kitchener's downtown, as seen tonight. These statements are simply not true. The 25-meter tower separation guidelines, which are a standard best practice for buildings of this size, are in place in numerous thriving municipalities across the country, not just Toronto, where intensification is happening faster than ever. If any of you have any further questions on this topic, I have brought Nima Kia from Lake Shore Planning. He's an expert on this issue, and I welcome you to ask him questions afterwards. Now, councillor Glenn Graham, you asked if Lake Shore could do the work to analyze whether a 25-meter tower setback could be feasible for the 100 Victoria development. I have had Lake Shore complete this work, and you have it in your package. It confirms the expert opinion provided by Rick Pennycook on September 15th. The 100 Victoria project is entirely feasible with the 25-meter tower separation in place. However, I do have some new information. With the recent attention on this issue, I have been contacted by more than one party interested in developing Arthur Place. As I said before, I'm actually not a developer. I'm just looking at it from that perspective. They have said that, subject to satisfactory outcome of this matter, they would be interested in developing Arthur Place. One party has actually submitted a letter of intent to me regarding the purchase of my properties for a future development similar to the example provided by Lake Shore Planning. In follow-up discussions, they have clearly indicated that proper tower setbacks are critical, especially since planning staff now intend to publish tower separation guidelines in the near future. I agree with Mr. Pinnard's point and Chris Pidgen's point on September 15th, that the city must work within the rules that are in place at the time of an application. Moving the goalposts every time there's upcoming changes are not good for business. However, this scenario is different. It is different because I stand here before you, alerting you to a clear and significant issue that can be resolved. My expert planner and legal counsel have both clearly advised, if this project moves forward without proper tower setbacks, Arthur Place will never be intensified. This is in clear and direct violation of the city's official plan. You can see the staff report published on August 5th that highlights specifically what is intended, intensification and redevelopment of Arthur Place. So having highlighted this obvious violation to you, rushing this approval before planning staff have had the opportunity to complete the guidelines would be reckless, irresponsible, and very bad planning, which the city would have to defend at the OMB. This tower will stand in the center of our community for 100 years or more. Proper planning is required. Thus, I respectfully request that council defer this matter until the tower separation guidelines, which staff agree are necessary, can be put in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions, Mr. Allerton? Councillor Glenn Graham.
Thank you very much, Owen, for coming in. So are you looking for 25 meters, or are you looking for less than that?
25 meters is the best practice. I'm open to compromise. I believe the current 12, which would be the result of the six-meter setback, is just way too small. There are no examples of that size. I think much earlier, we talked about 20 maybe being a compromise that would be more reasonable. The Northdale example in Waterloo, even though they passed 25, the first instance of applying to it, they actually came back and compromised at 20. So certainly open to something that is reasonable.
If you didn't get the results you were looking for, what would your next step be?
We're prepared to go to the OMB. This is very clear-cut kind of thing in terms of, you know, tower separation is a very standard thing that we would be going to the OMB with.
Thank you.
Councillor Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Allerton, for coming in and making your statement. I'm going to ask the same question of the Momentum group, but in their presentation, they say that on the third, fourth page, "Allerton property houses were built in early 1900s." The second statement is residential, "has not been permitted use for over 50 years." Do you not have people living in those houses?
Yeah. No, I mean, they were residential when we purchased them. They had people living in them. I lived in them, then eventually rented them out. We did renovate, but they were interior renovations that didn't require a permit, so don't worry.
Okay. So, do you understand this statement? Because I don't.
So, my understanding is if zoning's changed, you're kind of grandfathered in, and it's called legal non-conforming. So, but it's still, again, they've been residential for so long, obviously predating whatever zones were put in place.
Okay. The other question I had was related to, sorry. You said tonight you had some new information, and the new information that you informed us was that you have somebody who is interested in compiling...
Assembling the properties.
Assembling, thank you for that.
They've reached out and contacted. I don't know if that's going to go anywhere, but, I mean, it's been suggested that this is unlikely or unfeasible. I don't think that's the case. I have half of them. Some of the other owners are here. I've spoken to many of the owners. They're all interested in this. The city's official plan calls for it. We've, in previous meetings, discussed the fact that it's an inevitability for this block of land. So I don't know why suddenly it's being called into doubt.
Okay. So, you're really, you're essentially informing council that although there are residents living in those houses at present, that the majority of them that you have spoken with are interested in selling so that you can assemble the land in the future? Or not? Am I understanding?
To clarify, I'm not trying to assemble. I don't necessarily have the means to assemble. My point is someone else, like Momentum, the folks I'm talking to are from Toronto, may be interested in assembling, and that's entirely feasible for that to happen. Some of the residents are renters in the street, some of them are not. If this happens and how that plays out, I don't know.
Okay. One of your first statements was, "Tower separation is not the same as tower setback." Could you help me a little bit further understand that? I apologize for being a little dense on this.
No, no problem. So, my understanding of it, and Rick and the folks I've dealt with at Lake Shore Planning and Nima have confirmed to me, that the idea of tower separation is simply to make sure you maintain a good separation between towers, not that you always set back towers from property lines. And so, if you have a tower in place, good tower separation says you should put the next one a reasonable distance away from it. If you're in the process of planning and your plan says this whole area is going to have towers, then as you look at and approve each individual project going on to it, you should be making accommodation for that so that you can have proper tower separation and that you don't inadvertently put a tower somewhere where it would inhibit any towers from going where you had hoped for them to be. For example, Arthur Place is unique. Before, they highlighted that, "Well, look at our tower in the rear is so close to the Bram Street lots, and so this would make it not possible." Well, the Bram Street lots are quite expansive. You could easily put a tower there. And if and when you do, I hope you make sure it's a good 20 meters away from their tower. But Arthur Place is so small that maintaining that separation with their tower so close pushes it beyond the limits of a scalable tower that could go there. And from what we've seen, from the folks we've talked to, the folks in Toronto, they're saying you need a tower with at least a 700-square-meter base plate for that to be feasible. And if tower separation guidelines are put in place at 20 or 25 meters, I don't know what staff are going to come up with. I believe it should be, I think they said it would take them about six months last time, so I'm assuming sometime in the spring you'll get them. So if they put those in place, and there's a tower at six meters, you almost rule out any opportunity for Arthur Place to be redeveloped and intensified, and all those benefits that Mike Maxwell has highlighted could be realized again from Arthur Place. And that's the point. I'm not arguing compatibility with existing use. I'm embracing what's going on. I think the benefit to downtown is great. I love Mike's presentation because I support it. I support this development. I wish that we had talked in the last two months so that we could be coming tonight and approving this and getting it underway, because I can't wait to see it happen, just not in a way that inhibits what should be happening in Arthur Place.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Councillor Gisola.
You've almost answered a couple of the questions I had. The first one was, "Have you gotten together since we last met and had an opportunity to further discuss this?" And I guess the answer is no.
We've reached out a few times, and we're basically told, "Nope, not doing anything else." So, we haven't gotten together. I would like to have, but having received that response, we haven't.
And am I correct also, for one I've heard, I think I've heard, that the only problem you have with this project, that you quite like it, but the only problem that you're arguing about is the separation?
The separation of the tower specifically. So the podium is still at three meters. We're fine with this. We understand that. Absolutely, the only problem is with the tower setback.
Okay. Now, you've heard that, and, I mean, this whole thing got our staff moving on this, that they're going to come up with some kind of proposals or some kind of standards. And from what I understand, those won't be available till the springtime. As you see it now, will you be, do you feel you'll be prepared to go along with those standards that staff might be bringing forward?
We'll have to wait and see what they say, but, I mean, I'm assuming they're taking so long to prepare them so that they can ensure that they follow best practices and, you know, are defensible at the OMB. So if they do follow best practices, then that would make sense. We would go along with them. I mean, we'll have to wait and see what they'd say to answer you definitively, though.
Okay. And you've made it quite clear that if this doesn't move tonight in the direction that you'd like to see it go, I would gather that you would be in favor of a deferral until the spring when the recommendations are brought back by staff. Is that correct?
That's, I think that makes the most sense if Momentum's not willing to come to the table to some kind of compromise in the meantime.
Okay. You've indicated that you would be going to the OMB if it doesn't go in your direction. Do you have any idea of what that does to the timing?
I've been told it will take six to eight months. My planner and lawyer have suggested that they will probably want to see and consider the tower separation guidelines the city comes up with as well. So, I mean, I think it sounds like these things would be gating either way. However, Stephen O'Melia, I've retained from Miller Thompson, who will be leading this with the OMB after this, if it's approved, is here tonight and also presenting, so he may be able to answer more questions on that topic.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Etherington.
Question of Mr. Allerton. Mr. Allerton, could you just tell me again, since the deferral went through this council, clearly, have you met with Momentum?
No. Immediately following it, Rick Pennycook reached out to planning staff and said, "Please notify us as soon as you have something to review," because they were going to work on those preliminary guidelines. We had a follow-up note, I think about two, three weeks ago. They'd have to, Lake Shore have to talk to the timing. We also retained Stephen O'Melia from Miller Thompson, and he reached out directly to Momentum, and they informed him, "There's not really anything to talk about. We're not moving it more than six meters." So, no. I would like to have met, but we have not met.
I have a question of staff, Mr. Mayor. Maybe later.
After the delegations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allerton.
Okay. Are you suggesting, Mr. Allerton, that Stephen O'Melia is speaking or just here for questions?
Speaking.
Okay. So, Mr. O'Melia.
Good afternoon, Mayor Zaire, members of council. I am Steve O'Melia. And just before I begin, Mayor Zaire, on a personal level, I do want to personally congratulate you on the tremendous run you've had here and wish you well in your future endeavors. I was retained since the date of the last meeting, so I've had to do a bit of a quick study. I did speak with Mike Maxwell over the telephone, so I met with him by telephone, and that was the message we got back, was that there wasn't going to be a change. They changed as much as they were prepared to change, and we're coming forward and asking council to approve this tonight. I'm going to suggest to you that there's a lot of value in the statement, measure twice and cut once. And that's all we're asking council to do tonight. We're actually not asking it to refuse this application. We're simply saying it's smart to defer it. When we know we have citywide standards that are being developed and are going to be brought back to council for a full public airing and consideration, why would we not wait for those standards before approving a tower development at one of the major intersections, most high-profile intersections of Kitchener? In fact, staff's direction, and I take it from reading the last report, at the request of councillor Galloway-Seelock, council agreed to amend councillor Vravenevich's motion to include a clause directing staff to endeavor to report back by November 10, 2014 with preliminary tower separation guidelines. Now, that hasn't happened, and I don't fault staff at all for that. These type of standards take to thought, they take consideration, and it's not surprising at all that they weren't able to rush them back here. But again, I think that inevitably leads to the question, we ought not to wait for those standards so they can be considered, approved by this council, and applied to this development. Because as Mr. Allerton indicated, once this gets approved, if council rushes through an approval decision in haste tonight, and if it were not to be appealed to the board, this city will live with that result for decades. That's what planning is all about, I submit, is to do the thought and have the approval follow, and not the other way around. Measure twice and cut once. So I submit that it's not in the interest of anyone. I know, obviously, I've worked for developers from time to time. They all want to get things going as quickly as possible. I don't blame it. And the nice shiny towers will go up, and the photos are always great. But we're talking a deferral until the spring, at which time this council or the new council can consider this matter with the benefit of the standards that it was hoping to have tonight. And that will allow this council to make the decision and not throw it into the hands of a provincial tribunal. And so that's really what we're asking for tonight. Just in respect to Mr. Pidgen's comments, and I've certainly worked with Mr. Pidgen in the past, he referred to the clergy principle. It is a legal principle. I can tell you, it does not tie council's hands tonight. This council certainly has a role. I'm not sure if Mr. Pidgen was intending to imply that it was bound by the clergy principle. I'll debate that in the future if need be. But certainly, the official plan recognizes the Arthur Place lands as lands which will someday be intensified. I don't think anyone around this horseshoe tonight thinks it makes sense to keep them the way they are in perpetuity, regardless of the fact that Mr. Allerton, through his sweat equity, has been able to improve the existing situation. So ultimately, my client, I think, said it well, he's a good act to follow, but that's what we're asking for tonight, is that you simply allow the staff process that is underway to come to completion and come into the public forum before making a decision on this project, which obviously is directly related to whatever comes out of those standards. And I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. There's at least one question. Councillor Vravenevich.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming in, Mr. O'Melia. I guess I have one question for you. As someone who has represented many of these types of planning issues in the past, what you're asking for tonight is that the application be considered based on a future set of rules as opposed to the set of rules that applied at the time of the application and the consideration that staff would need to take at the time of the application. In my time on council, it has always been my understanding that the rules that apply are the rules that apply at the time of the application. Has that not been generally what you've experienced in your years of litigating these kinds of cases?
And through your worship, it's not quite as simple as that, because it depends on what rules you're talking about. As Mr. Allerton indicated, one of the rules is that the Arthur Place lands should be intensified. And what we're telling you tonight is that if this application is approved as presented, that won't happen. So there is a rule that will be precluded or frustrated by what... So there is a rule that will be precluded or frustrated by what Momentum is asking this council to do tonight. I was personally involved in an appeal and an OMB decision that approved a tower situation up in the North Dill neighborhood, and it did require a 25-meter setback. That was the result of a plan that was put in place by Marshall Maclean-Monahan, or a study that was brought in through that firm. Ultimately, that was settled in around approximately, and I don't remember the precise figure, but approximately 22 meters. But that was a case where, again, to answer your question, it's not as simple as saying there are no rules, therefore we should be able to do whatever we want, is effectively the shorthand answer of what I'm hearing. There aren't rules about tower separation, but that doesn't mean you throw it wide open. The original tower separation here, I think, was as low as three meters, and that's clearly unacceptable. Once a developer throws it into this council's hands to make a decision and requires relief from that council, council has a role to apply a broader principle of good land use planning, and I think that's a very broad thing. So, again, I would suggest that council should not feel constrained by any existing rules. The fact of the matter is there aren't any, but that doesn't mean council can't do anything about it. There's still a decision to be made, there's still an approval required, and I would submit that council does have a great deal of authority and ability to shape that decision and not simply sit back and let it happen based upon what the developer has decided it's prepared to do.
Well, in all due respect, I agree that council has a role and that council has a responsibility to consider a wide variety of factors from all the delegations we're going to hear from tonight. I guess the question I was specifically getting at was, you know, in your past experience, you know, typically, the expectation has been, of what I've heard, that it's the rules that apply at a particular point in time that should be considered, not some future set of rules. And I guess I'm trying to understand if you have found an experience different than that.
Yeah, no, and I guess I would respectfully disagree with that, through you, your worship. If there is a merging policy, which we clearly have here, there is a study underway, and it's an emerging policy because there's a recognized shortfall in the current rules on that particular point, I think it is good planning to take that emergency policy, emerging policy, excuse me, into consideration. So again, I don't think the clergy principle is so strict as to say, you're stuck with what you have, and if you don't have rules, it's a free-for-all. I think this council is perfectly entitled to let the existing process, which, again, was hoped to be concluded last week, and we now understand will be concluded in the springtime, I think it makes infinite sense to wait for that to take place and then to shape the development accordingly. And I don't think at all that it's the case you're stuck with the existing rules, particularly when there are none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Melia.
Thank you very much.
Next delegation is Terry Ross.
Thank you, and congratulations to everybody that are seated here tonight. So what I want to bring up during the campaign season, we're all talking about affordable housing for people. And when I inquired with planning about a few developments that are going in, are they having percentages of these units geared to people that cannot afford market rate? I was told, that's not our issue, contact the region. I believe it is our issue. It's our issue as citizens, not taxpayers, I'll use that phrase, as well as council and anybody else. We need to have something else added into every new development that goes in, and it's based on practices in other cities and other countries now, where a portion of the accommodations, let's say it's 100 units, a portion of 20% is geared to people who cannot afford market rate. The other thing I was working at is, I like the idea, I heard somebody mention that it's going to have employment in the area. We always see lots of developments going in, but people are coming in from outside our area, and they're working here, and then they go back, so they're spending their hourly wage in another locale. I even have family members that work in the masonry industry, and most of their work is done out of the KW area. I would like to see, again, all developments that are going in, we do have a percentage that's geared to income and employment, so they can spend their tax dollars in our area, not outside of the Kitchener-Warlow and the region. And that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ross? Seeing none, thank you. Ramon Singh.
Hello, Mayor Zera and members of council. My name is Ramon Singh, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Amrjeet Singh, who is the property owner of 9294 Victoria Street South, Kitchener. His property is adjacent to 98110 Victoria Street South. Mr. Singh has owned this property approximately since 1999. I'm here to outline Mr. Singh's concern to the official plan and zoning by law amendment, application by Momentum Development. Mr. Singh has patiently followed the process unfold from when the application was put forward for a proposed residential point tower with only a 2.8-meter setback from his property line. What was unimaginable was that City of Kitchener planning staff supported this very poor planning guideline. The rationale that was outlined in Momentum's application was the sitting of the building near to the northerly property line is necessary to ensure optimal efficiency of the underground parking layout of the above-ground podium floors in Tower One. The rationale provided for the location of the tower is with complete disregard for the impact on the Arthur Place property owners and on any future redevelopment of Arthur Place lands, as planned for in the official, in the new official plan and encouraged in the growth plan. I can understand that as a developer, Momentum is seeking an opportunity for maximization of development of their land. Citizens of Kitchener have entrusted City of Kitchener staff to be unbiased with planning process. Unfortunately, planning staff have failed in this when they provided support to this application. This support gave one-sided advantage to Momentum Development with serious detrimental impact on the maximum and appropriate development on his land. Development needs to be allowed on Arthur Place lands in a fair and equitable fashion as accordance with Kitchener's official plan policies. Instead, optically, it appears as if only the interests of Momentum Development are being considered. This is neither accountable nor transparent. It is our request that whatever the outcome is, that it be fair and equitable to all the parties. It's my request that a special provision be established that would also allow for a similar minimum tower setback for Arthur Place lands. In addition, I would like to request for a minimum of, in my previous, like, the letter that I gave you was two weeks, but I would rather want the deferral till December 15th, not till next spring or next year. I would feel that till December 15th is a fair time for settlement or to move, or to move the tower to the other side. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Are there any questions from Miss Singh? Councilor Fernandez.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Miss Singh. I would just want to understand where the property is that we are speaking of, and are you, can you get access from this property from Arthur Place or not, or from Victoria Street?
Victoria Street.
Victoria Street. Okay. And presently, you own that property and you live in it, or do you rent it?
It's rented.
It's rented, okay. And where in relation to, I'm just trying to understand where your property is in relation to Arthur Place, is, I have a map here, you may not have it.
I think it's the first property on the left-hand side of.
Yes.
Walter's, or Arthur Place.
All right, great. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you very much. Is that all? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, please.
Okay, now, questions of staff. Councilor Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. My first question had to do with, I'm a little bewildered when this, I've seen a couple of examples, when something like this is deferred and staff are recommended to try to get the two parties together and try to work out some kind of solution to this during the period of deferment. Why that does not happen, and I think there's another example coming before us tonight, where, in my opinion, it does not happen very successfully. So I want to know exactly what the procedure is to get the parties together.
Mr. Pina?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Zera, are you speaking about this specific instance or just our general practice? Can you clarify? Because I can speak as to what happened in this particular instance, or I can speak generally? It's really two different responses.
Just general practice, Mr. Pina.
Okay, so our general practice is to contact the parties and to see if there's an interest in getting together. If both parties have an interest, then we arrange a meeting, and we try and facilitate that meeting to the best of our abilities. If one of the parties does not, then we try as much as possible to transfer information via other methods besides face-to-face communication, and we report back on whatever the outcome of our best efforts are to committee and council.
Okay. And my second question has to do with, if this development, if Momentum's development goes ahead with the six-meter setback separation, could you tell me in clear black and white terms whether the Arthur Place development would be able to accommodate some form of high-rise development?
Through you, Mayor Zera, I can confirm that the Arthur Place properties have a lot of redevelopment opportunities. Even without an application, they can actually redevelop up to six stories. So without a zone change application, that would be a building comparable to the Kaufman loss. In terms of whether a tower can actually be situated on that, there would be more work that would have to be done. It would have to be done within the context of an application for the Arthur Place properties, which has a different context than the Momentum site, even although it's immediately adjacent. The relationship of those properties collectively is different than the Momentum properties in terms of its relationship to other buildings. So we think there's a high potential to get a tower, a smaller tower on that property. We actually showed an example at a previous meeting where we situated a tower. It was all very speculative and theoretical, but it is theoretically possible. It would be a smaller tower, and it is presuming that we don't have very stringent guidelines at some point in the future when an application for the Arthur Street, Arthur Place properties comes forward.
Okay, my final question, Mr. Pina, why at the moment do we not have, it's okay for me to say, but why don't we have the required separation policy between towers? Is it simply because we have not had towers next to each other, or?
Through you, Mayor Zera, we have a lot of tall buildings in the city. The separation of towers from each other has never been identified as an issue. This is the very first time, and we have looked into it. We still maintain it is a sound planning principle to have that tool, but we don't think it's imperative to have that tool in order to make a decision on a tall building. All of the tall buildings that are in place in the city were, decisions on those applications were made without having those guidelines in place.
Thank you very much.
I made an error. I said I would go back to Mr. Pigeon for questions of Mr. Pigeon, and so I've got two people in the queue for questions of staff. You can just hold those and ask Mr. Pigeon to come back. There may be questions. First, do you have some for Mr. Pigeon? Okay, I'll just take a second. And, Councilor Fernandez, please. Okay. So, questions, Councilor Gisola to Mr. Pigeon.
Yeah, my questions were of Mr. Pigeon or Mr. Maxwell. I would like to have some kind of indication from you as to what is your timing for this project? What did you hope to see this come into fruition?
Mr. Maxwell? Sorry. So when would we hope for an approval, or would you like the whole timetable for the project?
I wanted to see the very back end of it. When did you hope to be opening the doors? I just want to see how this all fits together.
To open the doors for the project?
Yes, yeah.
So, we were scheduled to start construction, so approval was predicated, actually, on approval eight weeks ago, and opening the doors for construction, I believe, was the end of 2016 for Tower One and 2017 for Tower Two.
What, if there's a deferral now until April or May, when staff brings out their report, what does that do to you?
What in, well, I mean, there's, these are very intricate projects, so there's all sorts of ramifications. Dramatically increases carry cost, interest expense, whatnot, on a project this size, I'm sure you can appreciate, an awful lot of investment has already been made, so there's an awful lot of cost of that capital. From a purchaser's point of view, circumstances change, the longer you go out, circumstances change with purchasers. We have a very dynamic purchaser group, so purchasers get lost, made, other projects get launched. In a infill project of this nature, condos specifically, there are tremendous ramifications for not heading deadlines.
So, but we're talking here, a delay, a deferral of, say, four to five months?
Yes, that's a further four to five months than we've already been working on the project. We've been working on this project for about two years now.
I would appreciate that. What happens if this goes to the OMB? What does it do to your timing then?
It would have the same issues.
Is it possible that the timing would be delayed even more than that?
I guess, that would be up to the OMB, I would expect, yes.
Is it, okay, is it worthwhile to you to have a deferral now and try to come to some agreement in conjunction with staff recommendations that are going to be coming forward?
No, absolutely not, unequivocally. From a negotiation standpoint, I'm assuming Mr. Allerton's unaware of our conversation with Mr. O'Melia from Miller Thompson. We spoke for about an hour. Mr. O'Melia was expected to get some more information from his client and get back to me. That was, we received a letter from him on October 14th, followed up on October 21st. To date, we're still waiting on that call. Extending out the timetable for any reason has an impact, but there is more certainty surrounding the process with the OMB.
So what happens tonight if council does decide to defer this?
My understanding is on December 4th or 5th, we have leave to make application to the OMB.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Verbanovic, questions?
Yeah, and I guess that was part of my question, in the sense that we heard from Mr. Allerton, that if the project were to be approved, they're going to go to the OMB. We've just heard from you that if we defer or don't make a decision, you would be going to the OMB on December the 6th. Because the only other scenario is if, for some reason, the project isn't approved. Is it fair to assume that you'd be going to the OMB under those circumstances as well?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, we've invested an awful lot of time already right now. We did communicate on September 15th, when we were in front of council, that notwithstanding the week in between September 8th and September 15th and subsequently, we are aware of the site limitations, and a 12 and 1/2-meter setback from the property line makes this development substantially, it damages this development by applying one of the 150 guidelines from Toronto's principles. By applying one of the 150 guidelines from Toronto's principles, we then turn around and violate a whole bunch of other ones that make for quality developments. So we were well aware of those at the time. So we have done our homework. We know what this site is capable of. We have very talented designers with Chris from GSP and Matt from ABA, and we're very aware of what the site is. And we do need resolution on this issue, yes. Oh, sorry, excuse me.
Your worship, Mr. Pidgen?
One other comment. So if, if council were to impose the 12.5 meter separation distance to property line, we're focused on the front tower on Victoria Street, the second tower wouldn't meet that setback either. So essentially, there would be two towers that wouldn't comply. I, I would hesitate to say, but I don't think there would be a project on the site. So you can't cherry pick the regulation, which is a twelve-and-a-half meter setback from property line would apply to all property lines, and the potential is that there's no project.
The other question I have for you is, I mean, obviously, you've applied for the various planning approvals based on the rules that existed at, at the time. There is now the potential for, or we're being asked at least, to see a new set of rules be brought into place, and the project to then be evaluated against that new set of rules. I just want to understand what that kind of moving of the goalposts potentially means to someone in the development industry and to a project like this? And what are the, you know, what are the upsides and what are the risks associated with, with that?
Through you, Mayor. So the, the nature of infill projects is very long and very complicated. I mean, we're, we're speaking here about one aspect that falls into a project which has an enormous number of variables. You have, planning, planning guidelines is only one. You have economics, you have market demand, you have market demand on residential, commercial, costs, economic climate. All of these things have to be developed in sync at the same time to make these projects go ahead. We, planning is, is a notorious one because it, it's lengthy in, in nature, but the more certainty you get in any process, of any of the variables, is, is paramount. Applying rules that get developed during the process, or at the very least, what we're doing, talking about right now is, at the approval stage, I mean, it's, it's, it's very damaging. There's no two ways about it, from a reputation standpoint and a planning principle. When we buy a land, we have to evaluate under a certain regime and an expectation. And if it falls apart somewhere through there, through our own due diligence is one thing, but if it falls apart because the rules get changed at this stage, there's very little confidence in the development industry at that point, that developments can proceed with any certainty whatsoever. Is that?
Yes, so in other words, if I hear what you're saying correctly, that people make investment decisions based on the information that exists at the day, at a certain point in time, and the rules that exist? And the, the risk to us as a, as a municipality becomes that if we start changing those rules, people's confidence in investing in the area starts being called into question?
Absolutely. Competent business people evaluate with the rules and the knowledge that is in place at the time. This particular, what we're talking about, this particular planning principle of tower separation was not on anyone's radar when we started this process two years ago. It wasn't brought up until early June, when we had already invested, you know, 18 months on this project. Doing due diligence on existing uses, future uses, desires, in terms of the official plan and whatnot, is what a competent real estate developer and real estate owner do.
Okay, the last question I have is, and I guess a little confused, because we heard from the other delegation that they reached out to you on a number of occasions, and there was no willingness to have some dialogue. We heard from you that there was a lengthy conversation with the applicants, sorry, with the, with the other delegation's solicitor, and that there was an expectation for information to come back, and that never happened. So I'm just trying to come to terms with the two varying stories.
Those are, yes, through you, Mayor. Yes, those are very different opinions of a phone call. I think Mr. Omealia did allude to the fact that we did have that conversation following up on the letter. He indicated that he needed to speak with his client and get more information, and we would be following up shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. I had said that to Mr. Allerton, I was going to asking, would be asking you the same question. I, I do have the answer, but I'm curious to see what your response is. On the third page of your presentation, you talk about the residential has not been permitted use for over 50 years. Can you explain to me what your intention was when you said that?
Yes, Your Worship, so in, in 1994 and 1985, the City of Kitchener has zoning compliance letters. They're a very, very common letter that's issued when someone is acquiring a property. And in the 1994 letter, it indicates that residential use for the Arthur Place properties was removed from the industrial zone on December 19th, 1955. So it was in 1955 when residential was removed as a permitted use within the zoning classification that applies to Arthur Place.
Okay, so you're saying that the people that were living there shouldn't, shouldn't be living there?
No, I'm not saying that at all. It's, these houses were built in 1915. So if you go back to the 1924 zoning bylaw, that's, that's when industrial, the lands were designated industrial, but the house preceded that. So in other words, it is illegal, or there's a question of whether it's legal, but it is a permitted use. It's, it's continued to be occupied as a residential use. Typically, as I indicated, the, when a purchaser looks to invest in a property, and the Allertons have, have done this, they would ask the City of Kitchener for something called a zoning compliance letter. They typically do that through their legal counsel. Their legal counsel informs them, yes, the property is zoned residential, or in this case, no, it's not, not zoned residential. So this type of use is not permitted. Very, very typical practice.
The other comment you made, or Mr. Maxwell may have made it, you said that if we did the 12.5 meter separation, that the other tower would not comply. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Actually, through you, Your Worship, actually, that was Chris.
I'm sorry?
That was Chris who said that, but yes.
All right.
One of us did.
Are they, are these two towers not on the same property?
They are, Your Worship. So the 12, if the 12-and-a-half meter separation to property line, that's what Allertons are asking for. So if you, if council decides to impose that as a requirement, the tower towards Victoria Street doesn't comply, but neither would the rear tower. So it's closer than 12-and-a-half meters to the property line, adjacent property lines.
I guess when I'm looking at the one diagram that's on 6C-17, which is this one here?
Yes, that's Mr. Allerton's consultant's diagram, yes.
Okay, okay. But that, that little pink, or it's not pink on this picture, but I'm assuming it's the pink, it would have been the pink line if this was in color, shows the 12.5 meter setback from the property line. And I, I assumed that the back tower would have, would have been in line with that setback. But you're saying that's not the case.
Again, look, clarity, I think what, I'll show you on this one. He's talking about the rear tower being separated from the property line of the property behind those on wall.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, thank you. The mayor has clarified that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, there is, you have one more brief question, Councilor Gazola? You just don't go around a second time.
I'm sorry, I didn't. From what I'm understanding, that if you have to go to this 12-and-a-half meter separation, the, the project is no longer viable? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that's, that's accurate. If we start introducing new regulations of this magnitude, different than, than what we purchased the property under, that, that puts the entire project in jeopardy, absolutely.
Okay, so another question I was concerned about, part of the, when you were assembling the land, part of it was purchased from the City of Kitchener, a small sliver. Without that, was the project viable? Would the project have been viable without that parcel of land?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, no, it's an integral part. Most land assemblies, when you're, you're, you get to a critical mass where it can be developed. And that's what we've achieved here, through the entire assembly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. One further question for staff, Councilor Banovich?
Thank you very much.
We'll deal with the question.
It's actually a couple of questions for staff. Through you two, Mr. Pinnard, in the applicant's presentation, there were a number of other projects within the City of Kitchener that were highlighted, where the separation that's being proposed did not exist. I guess I just want to understand, what criteria did staff use in considering those applications? And are you in fact using that same approach in considering this application?
Mr. Pinnard?
Through Mayor Zaire, what I can confirm is that we made decisions and recommendations on those without having any guidelines in place. And they were all approved during different timeframes, some of them during my time here, some of them preceding me. But our practice has always been to use the tools that we have available to the best of our abilities, and to go through our rigorous process and, and come up with a recommendation for committee and council. So that would have been our, our, our practice for reviewing those applications.
So when you say using the tools, are you saying essentially that you're using the, the rules, policies and guidelines that exist at, at a given point in time? And that's what you used for this application?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
And would that, I mean, what, what's being asked of us by Mr. Allerton and his representative, and by the other delegation, is that we change the rules midstream and, and consider this proposal under a new set of rules? Is that, is that a norm in, in the planning field?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, it's definitely contrary to our practice. And my general understanding, I don't have complete knowledge of everyone's practice, is that most municipalities, or many municipalities, have a practice that is similar to ours.
Okay. The next question I have is, in terms of your, your timeframe, it's been suggested that you could have new rules in place by spring, I guess, March, April. Is that in fact realistic? Or would that really mean putting a whole lot of other projects aside in order to, to get that done? Because it would seem to me, if we are going to do that right, if we're going to have comprehensive consultations and so on on a new set of rules, it, in light of all the other things that I know that we're doing, like our, our zoning and our infill residential guidelines and so on, trying to get it done in three or four months seems a little ambitious.
Mr. Pinnard?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, it would be a little bit longer than three or four months. I think at the earliest, it'd be April or so in 2015, which is possibly five and a half months from, from, from this point in time. It is not something that we can guarantee, because we think now, after looking into it, that we need to actually engage with some, some landowners to understand the implications of a citywide guideline. And depending on what type of feedback and where that particular component of the process leads us, that's the one, it's a variable that we can't control, that, that will really determine whether or not we can actually achieve April 2015, or whether we have to push it back some more.
And the impact on other projects was part of the question?
Yes, through you, Mayor Zaire. So because we are going to be working on a citywide, or at least downtown-wide guideline, it is not really something that's to guide us only for the decision of one development application that's underway. In fact, we'll probably be introducing transitional rules that will actually deal with stuff that's already underway, and that's part of the complexity. But having a guideline in place, no doubt, affects all decisions that are at least somehow underway already.
No, I thought, excuse me, I think the question is, what is the impact on other city projects and other planning programs that are in place if you do this? Will there be other planning initiatives that will be, have to be put on hold?
Okay, through Mayor Zaire, nothing has to be put on hold up until the point where we go to engage the stakeholders, depending on the feedback we get. If there's a lot of follow-up that requires more work than anticipated, then we'll have to revisit whether or not we need to move something off, else off of our plate, or make some kind of decision on our, our business plan.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Glenn Gray?
Thanks very much. Mr. Pinnard, since we're talking about rules and norms, is it normal to have pre-sales for a developer to come to you with a project and to present to you something that's essentially a fait accompli in terms of pre-sales?
Through Mayor Zaire, I don't know how, how, how well I can answer that. I do know that a lot of applicants that are building multiple residential will actually do pre-sales to, to gauge the market and then try and shape their applications based on the response they get to, to pre-sales. But in terms of norm as to how often it happens or not, that's not something that we've ever attempted to, to, to measure, but I do know that it has happened.
Okay. I understand one of the, the limiting factors here in changing the, the tower separation is, is pre-sales. Would that be a fair assessment?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that the, the design of the building and the relationship between all the components of the building and the underground garage are the, the limiting factors. But anything beyond what I've just said on that, I would defer to the, to the applicant's architect or engineer.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilor Gazola, question of staff?
Yeah, I, part of it's been answered, and I, I'm again concerned with the timing, and I did want to hear, and you're, you're saying we're looking at around April. Is there any way that this, that your work can be sped up so it's done sooner than that?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, no, I don't think we can. Not after what we have found since we started to look into this issue. Also, I, I, I do want to note that when we come back with guidelines, they are going to be guidelines that apply broadly, not just to this one piece of property. And when we do introduce new guidelines or, or, or new tools, we often will come in with transitional rules. And that is something that's very complicated, that's going to take some time to sort out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there are no further questions. Councilor Banovich, would you like to bring in the item that is on page two of our agenda? This is item 8C.
Yes, thank you.
Just a second. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Callaway-Seelock, the, that the recommendation as referred to the meeting this date and listed on our agenda with respect to this application, namely to, to approve it, be, be approved.
Speaking to the motion now specifically, and trying not to go back over everything we've talked about before, Councilor Gazola?
I wanted to ask about the possibility of a deferral.
Well, you need to put forward a motion for deferral. The motion is on the floor now, and if there is a deferral motion, we would deal with that first.
Well, I would like to put forward a motion to defer Well, I would like to put forward a motion to defer this till May.
To a specific time or...
Well, I would like to... It would be nice to have a date and have it dealt with at that time. I'm hoping that the staff will have their bulk of their report done in March, April, so that it can be dealt with in May. That's about a five-month delay.
Does someone have the 2015 schedule? And what is the, I would suggest, committee schedule for May? So there are committee meetings on May the 4th and 25th. There's a council meeting on May the 11th. Which date do you prefer?
I think it could go back at that stage, right to the council meeting of the 11th.
So May the 11th is the, this is to defer this matter to May the 11th, 2015. Is there a second? Councilor Glenn Gray? There's no debate on the deferral except to time. Seeing none? Those in favor of the deferral? Keep your hands up, please. Those opposed? The motion for deferral is defeated. Back to the main motion, then? Those in... I'm going to call the question.
You're not going to call the vote on, are we going to...
Well, I...
On the main motion? No, I have a comment.
We were in the question, we were in the comment period, so if you wish to comment, you can go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor Gazola?
I was hoping that I would hear some other comments prior to that. I will kick off by saying I won't support the motion as it is there now. I... From everything I've heard and everyone, I think everyone agrees that this is an excellent project, that it's going to... We're not, you're really, it's hard to go wrong on it. We know there's going to be development in this area. We know that in the fullness of time, the Arthur-placed area will be developed. I mean, we're developing right over to the, to the main transit hub is right there. So we know that these, all these areas are going to be developed, probably they will be developed with high-rise residential properties. So we need to deal with this and to get it right. There's going to be a lot of this in the next three, four years, especially along that whole transit corridor. The, there are two, the opponents here are not arguing about, the only thing they're arguing about is the tower separation. I know if I were, if I were one of the residents of that, I would like to see as much tower separation as possible. So I really feel that it is something that, and from what I'm seeing, one way or another, it's going to the OMB, and it's going to be delayed beyond my May the 11th date that I had previously set up. I'm hopeful that, I was hopeful that with further discussion, and there really hasn't been that much talk, from what I can understand since our last meeting, I would hope that there could be some discussion and that the parties could get closer together so that it would, it would not go to the OMB, that the decision would come back here on the 11th and be made here. So for that reason, I won't be supporting the recommendation that's before us tonight.
Councilor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This development is in my ward, Ward nine, and I will support it because, in my opinion, momentum in past months has been working toward some resolution. I think the company has changed its plans, faced with some of our concerns. Those changes have resulted in increase to six-plus meters, and I'm satisfied that in this particular instance, appropriate efforts have been made by the developer. I also think that we hear all this saber rattling about the OMB. There's still nothing, if this project is approved, there's still nothing to prevent ongoing negotiations between these two parties in an effort to avoid the OMB and the delays that that involves. Now, having said all of that, I'm sort of holding my nose because, as I've said in other instances, I think planning should be ahead of and not following this kind of situation. So, and again, I'd say, that's great for me to say, but I would like to be in a position where these policies are in place and we're not talking about something as vague as creating them by next spring, and I think it would be beyond the spring. So I plan to support the motion.
Councilor Aynitis?
Yes, through you, Mayor Zaire. I'll be supporting the motion that's been put forward in the fact that I'm not very comfortable with having some principles in place and then changing the guidelines when it's three-quarters way through. And I think Mr. Maxwell had put it in a good perspective for me. We would, we'd be kind of putting out there that the city negotiates whenever they will negotiate and negotiate and change their, change the goalposts on them. And how do you create faith? And to me, I think we would lose a lot of faith in that. And that's why I would, I'm going to support it. But in addition, we've heard from staff and we've heard from, we've heard from both delegations that they're going to go to the OMB regardless. Each one party's going to do it. So let's put it on their dollar and not on the taxpayer's dollar. Because if we defer this, they're going to go and appeal to the OMB, and then it's going to be on our dollar. So let's let the parties settle it themselves.
Councilor Verbanovic?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And without a doubt, this has been a difficult one to grapple with because I think a variety of principles are in question here that we, as a council, needed to consider. I listened intently tonight as all of them, as all of the delegations were making their presentations and making their various arguments for the, for why they felt their particular view needed to be considered. For me, at the end of the day, the compelling issue here is a couple of things. Number one, I believe, and I have continually heard both from people in industry and from residents alike, that when it comes to these kinds of issues and proposals, what's really important is that we're clear on where those goalposts are, as Councilor Aynitis just referred to, and that we maintain those goalposts throughout the process. And I've heard that again, both from citizens and from business alike. And I think in this particular instance, that's what we're trying to do here. I think staff have outlined why the proposal that's before us, and quite frankly, we see a better proposal before us than what originally came to committee with even greater separation makes good planning sense. And we saw a number of projects that were highlighted by the applicant throughout the city where a lesser setback is in fact in place and has, and I don't think anybody would question whether or not those particular projects have been successful in positive additions to our downtown. Yes, it is true that we asked the two sides to go and have some discussion. And I'll be frank, I'm a little disappointed that there hasn't been more discussion about it. But I'm also equally disappointed that there seems to be some inconsistencies in terms of the level of discussion that in fact did take place. It is clear that, at the end of the day, this is going to go to the OMB. And so the clock starts ticking after a decision gets made tonight. But the reality is, this can, this was going to go to the OMB either as early as tomorrow potentially or as early as December 6th, or whatever that date was if we deferred. So in other words, before this council even had a chance to meet, or the new council had a chance to meet in its first meeting in December, the reality was, this was likely going to go to the OMB. And so I think at this point, we need to make a decision based on the planning principles we have. I think we need to continue to move forward on developing long-term principles, both in terms of setbacks, in terms of infill development in general, and sure, that doesn't come as any surprise to anyone around this horseshoe because I've been talking about that in perpetuity. So with that, I would, I would hope that we do move this forward this evening. I think it does send an important message to the broader investment community about our region. I mean, we even heard from the opponent that, at the end of the day, they think this kind of thing is a positive thing for our city and the type of direction we need to be moving in in terms of intensification for our downtown and for the community as a whole. And so I think seeing this move forward will send that message that we are open for business, that we will continue to improve our policies as we go forward. And along the way, we will also be consistent in our application of the rules that exist in any point in time so that we are being fair to everyone concerned.
Okay, there are no further comments. I'll just make a brief comment. I will be supporting the recommendation as it is before us. And I do that because I believe it is a reasonable and viable project. It's been made, comments have been made several times now about ultimately going to the OMB regardless. And we did not support a deferral. Therefore, the decision tonight is approval or not approval. Should we, should council vote to not approve this? And it was taken to, that was for a previous speaker. Should the, should it go to the OMB and we, because we did not approve it? Our position, council's position, the city's position, would have to be represented by people other than our own staff because they took the position of approval. And so that would be a huge additional cost to the city as well. I do not vote in favor of the approval here for that reason alone, but that is also a consideration. So on balance, I will be supporting the recommendation. And I, recorded vote has been called for, I was just going to suggest that. You may now vote. Those opposed, the motion is carried. Councilor Verbanovic?
Just one other comment I wanted to make to staff because I think one of the issues that was raised here is trying to ensure that as we move forward, we preserve the development rights of this, of this particular piece of land going forward. And I just want to say that as staff look at the broader zoning guidelines for the city, one of, and the other planning documents that they're going to be looking at, I would hope that they would ensure that we give this area the best possible consideration to ensure that it, that we can, we can see the maximum reasonable potential development in these lands going forward. And so I would ask that staff consider that in dealing with those broader issues.
Okay, we'll move forward on our agenda. We're now dealing with item 6D, which is the heritage permit applications for 1094 Dune Village Road and 1112 Dune Village Road. We have several delegations, and as we did in the previous item, I'm going to ask the proponent to come forward first, which may answer some questions that could arise by the delegations or by council. And then after the other delegations have spoken, we'll come back and answer questions, we'll ask questions of the proponent so that we close the loop that way. You're right. I'm just being reminded that Cheryl Drake, our heritage staff, will be making comments first. Cheryl, Michelle, I missed my note, so we'll get you on. There you go.
Through you, Mayor Zaire. I won't actually go through the presentation, but there are a number of slides available should they be needed. But I did just have a few introductory remarks, given the number of delegations that are here this evening. Staff did recommend approval of the applications to demolish and construct a new single-detached dwelling on each property. Our recommendations were based on the policies of the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District Plan, some of which are very broad, and the precedent established with other new buildings approved by Heritage Kitchener and council. Heritage Kitchener recommended approval of the demolitions. However, motions to recommend, motions to recommend approval of the new single-detached dwellings were lost, and no subsequent motions were put forward by Heritage Kitchener. With respect to the new single-detached dwellings, Heritage Kitchener expressed concerns regarding the size, the suburban design, and the compatibility with the rural character of the district. Based on these comments, staff believe Heritage Kitchener intended to recommend refusal of the single-detached dwellings. Legislatively, council is required to approve, refuse, or approve with terms and conditions the heritage permits within 90 days of receipt. With respect to these applications, that would be prior to January 17th, 2015. And if council fails to make a decision by this date, under the legislation, the applications are actually deemed to be approved. A decision to refuse may be appealed by the owner to the Ontario Municipal Board, and if there is not a decision made tonight, a decision must be made at the December 15th council meeting.
We will go with the delegations. And proponent Paul Bastanian, do I have that close in pronunciation? And Vince Robitaille?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Lurie Capital. We asked if we could go last, if there's any other...
Yes, what I was, I'm going to give you an opportunity at the end as well, as we did with the last delegation. Because there, some of the issues that you might be speaking of may help us with the other delegations and questions. Then we'll bring you back for questions from council.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. My name is Paul Bastanian. I'm the applicant for 1094 Dune Village Road. This is Vince Robitaille. He is the applicant for 1112 Dune Village Road. The reason we wanted to speak up together was we didn't want to reiterate the same information to you. As Michelle said, the applications were both approved for demolition, but were refused for new construction, even with the city staff being positive and supportive and recommending approval. I'd like to start off by saying how we got to this point. We approached city staff, we were interested in building new construction homes in that area. We asked them what would be the best steps. They, we came to the decision that we'd start off with a demolition permit. We first started off with both properties being for demolition. At the time, 1094 was approved for demolition, but 1112 was not approved for demolition. The reasoning was, they wanted, the committee wanted more information on the new construction that would be built. that would be built. At that point, Vince and I worked with the city staff and their neighborhood representative to help provide multiple new elevation drawings, which went through many changes according to their recommendation. These recommendations and changes we did were to design a home that followed all the policies required by the Upper Dune District Heritage Plan. Once city staff seemed to be in agreement with our elevations, we proceeded for final draft to the, sorry, we proceeded with the final draft to the committee by applying for new construction for 1094 Dune Village and applying for demolition of 1112 Dune Village, along with new construction. Again, both applications were presented to the committee with positive staff report and recommendation for approval for new construction and demolition for 1112. The committee voted, and we received demolition approval for 1112 Dune Village, but both applications for new construction were denied. The only reason at the time they gave us denial was, from our sending, it was too big. If you look at pages one and two, it shows the houses we were proposing to build.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight in front of you to go over the facts, and to demonstrate to you that both of us worked very hard to have these two final elevations here in front of you, so that it would meet all the required zoning bylaw standards, and to have it meet the guidelines of the Upper Dune Heritage District Plan. You can turn to page three, which shows the zoning for the area. In regards to the committee's concern that the new houses proposed are too big, let's first look at the zoning in place for this area. If we go over the basics, you can see that both homes follow all the requirements of the zoning for minimum side, front, and rear yards. Both homes are also under the zoning height restriction, which is at 10.5 meters. 1094 is proposed at 10.36, 1112 is proposed at 10.39. If you please turn to page four, it'll show a little bit about the lot coverage. In the zoning that I'd like you to pay attention, is that under the zoning, the maximum lot coverage is in a quote, "a total of 55 percent, of which the habitable portion of the dwelling shall not exceed 45 percent." As you can all see, both homes are not even close to these numbers. We've got 8.7 percent coverage for 1094 and 5.2 percent for 1112, which are well below the size of homes that could potentially be built. If you could please turn to page five. Now, the existing configuration of the lot at 1112 does not meet the required frontage of 24 meters. Therefore, currently, as the lot sits, it doesn't conform to most of the lots around the Dune Village Road. What we have proposed to the committee is to sever frontage from 1094 Dune, which is almost double the frontage of the zoning, and add it to 1112. This would result in frontage of 31.4 meters for 1094 and 39.7 meters for 1112 Dune Village, making these two lots exceed the frontage requirements and conform better to the area of the village. You can see here on the image that most properties have the minimum requirement. If you look at 1084 next door, 1074, 1062, and I'd like you to please pay particular attention to 1122, the overall footprint of those structures are fairly large as well. This illustration also demonstrates that the proposed houses are of similar sizes to the adjacent lots, and please note that these neighboring lots are smaller in size in comparison. Not only would we be following what the area has in place, but we would be eliminating one driveway at 1094, which currently has two. Having two driveways on one lot is not something that is similar to other properties on Dune Village Road. We would be improving the streetscape by eliminating that. The comments made regarding the size and not meeting the policy requirements are false, and there are absolutely nothing stating maximum size in regards to width or square footage in the policy of the Upper Dune Heritage District Plan. The only item mentioned is regarding the form of a new building, which states, I quote, "The form shall be varied with consideration, given to one and a half, two-story height, medium-to-steeple pitch roofs, dormable windows, rear additions, and add-ons." That is all the information given. We went over this information with staff and made the required changes to our house plans. I would like you to see some examples of homes that are built in the Dune Village Heritage District. Before that, I want to tell you at the committee meeting, someone made a statement that Oregon Court was not part of the Heritage District Plan. And therefore, we should not be justifying our proposal based on similar dwellings found on this court. So if you please turn to page six. This information is however false, and is being used as the basis of their objection to our proposal. An email sent to us from city staff, Michelle Drake, confirms that Oregon Court is within the Heritage District. Therefore, comparing our proposal to these homes is justified, comparison and matching existing homes in the district. If you please go to page seven, I also want to mention that if you look over the Upper Dune Heritage Plan, which was made in 1988, you will see a market, a marked outline, sorry, showing the areas that are part of the Dune Heritage District. Oregon Court might not have been built yes, yet, but is win, is within the marked boundaries, and therefore would have to conform to the guidelines set in place by the Upper Dune Heritage District Plan once built. If you could please turn to page eight. Here you have a home on Oregon Court within the Heritage District that's around 3,800 square feet with a three-car garage. And if you look at it carefully, there's similarities to this home and the home I'm proposing to you for 1112 Dune Village. You can clearly see that we're following the Upper Dune policies and utilizing the area to conform in shape and size. Another piece of relevant information, I'll just be...
You have a minute to go.
Okay. And it seems that a lot of people forget to mention, is that the property at 1094 has two large structures already on the property. Please turn to page nine and 10. One structure is the existing home, which is approximately 2,100 square feet. The second structure is a large steel shed that is 20 feet in height and comprises of another 1,200 square feet, for a total of 3,300 square feet, currently on 1094 Dune Village. The opinion that these home, that the homes we're proposing are too large and would not look appropriate when 1094 currently has 3,300 square feet of structure on them, one being a steel structure that's not pleasing to look at, I believe is irrational. We're basically replacing an existing building mass with a, with a similar mass that would be more aesthetically pleasing. Some of the comments that we heard at the committee delegations were based on personal opinions and not facts. I believe that this city was built on following the guidelines that were set to grow and improve the city, but at the same time, protect the rights of the citizens. We have presented to you the real facts, that our proposal followed the guidelines put forward in the zoning bylaw and the Heritage District Plan, and we hope you make your decision based on these facts. To conclude, the staff reports recommend approval of demolition and approval of the new construction for both these properties, and we trust that U.S. Council will agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We've received quite a bit of material, and one of them was a large, did this come from you?
No.
Okay, so we'll wait until someone points that out to us as part of the other delegations. Okay, questions of, no, actually, we're going to hold the questions on this, these two individuals, they'll be coming back forward a little later on. We'll go to the other delegations, and there are seven of them. Sorry, one has been withdrawn. This is Brian McKinnis, because he had sent in his written comments, and we received an email to that extent earlier today. So the first one is Karen Tilt. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Zaire, and members of council. My name is Karen Tilt, and I live at 1059 Dune Village Road. My family has lived in the Village of Dune since 1865. I'm very proud to live in Dune because, because of its rural setting. For almost 40 years, the residents of Dune have worked very hard to maintain its heritage and uniqueness. I'm here tonight to express my concerns regarding the demolition of two existing homes and the proposal of two new single-dwelling houses at 1094 and 1112 Dune Village Road. My first concern is the size of the proposed houses. My family and I are not opposed to new houses being built in the area, but we are concerned about the size, height, and exterior materials of the two proposed houses by the applicants. A 4,700-square-foot house with a height of 34 feet will not enhance or complement the existing heritage homes in the area. The proposed houses are 34 feet high, which is well above the surrounding height of existing buildings. The information in the Heritage Report states, "The significant setback of the single detached dwelling will assist to visually reduce the perception of building height." This suggests that the height of the proposed buildings is significantly higher than the existing houses adjacent to the proposed site. Whether the buildings are setback or not, the new houses are significantly higher than the surrounding homes. I would like to bring your attention that the pictures of the homes that were submitted by the Heritage Planner are not homes adjacent to the proposed site. Most of the homes in the report are on Oregon Court and cannot be seen from Dune Village Road. Using these homes as a comparison is an inaccurate representation of the surrounding homes that are adjacent to the proposed site. My second concern is the proposed exterior material of fieldstone. According to the application, the new single dwelling would be clad primarily in fieldstone on the front elevation. I would like to bring to your attention that there are no homes on Dune Village Road that are clad primarily, primarily in fieldstone. The existing homes that surround the proposed site are all brick. If these massive homes are built on Dune Village Road, it will only encourage prospective developers to purchase other properties and build very large, expensive, and exclusive homes. This would definitely change the landscape of the historic Village of Dune, not to mention that this goes against bylaw 8817. If I had wanted to live beside a 4,700-square-foot exclusive home, I would have purchased a home in east, in a state subdivision such as Hidden Valley. But I have chosen to live in Dune because of its unique culture, heritage, and rural charm. I feel that it's important for council to uphold and support the City of Kitchener's strategic plan in preserving, honoring, and protecting the unique heritage of, of Upper Dune. I ask council to refuse the demolition permits for 1094 and 1112 Dune Village Road, and to uphold Heritage Kitchener's decision of refusing the application for the construction of two new single-dwelling houses. As stated in the Heritage Kitchener's minutes from November the 4th, 2014, "The excessive size and suburban design of the homes are not in keeping with the heritage characteristics and attributes of the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for this delegation? Councilor Banovich.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in tonight. I guess my one question for you is, are you aware that since the Heritage District has been put in place, there have been other homes built within the district that are similar in, in size and scope as what's being proposed here, and that were approved as part of that process?
Yes, I am aware that new buildings have been proposed, but the new homes that have gone up in the Dune area are nowhere near 4,700 square feet. I believe another delegate will address that.
Okay, and my other question is, so what specifically would you like to see different with the applicant's proposal?
I would like to see a less suburban estate home. If you look at the drawings in the, the package, they definitely would not fit into the homes that are across the road or beside them. They would definitely dwarf the homes that are there, and they would not be complementary to the, the design of the homes that are there. Definitely, the, the proposal of these two homes going in are definitely very, very modern, and they would not fit in with the old homes that are there.
Okay, the, the one home on Oregon Court was, was referenced by the applicant, and it does seem to be very similar to the, to the proposals they've brought forward. Did you have concerns at the time with the home on Oregon Court as well?
On Oregon Court?
Yes.
I believe that went in without most of the neighborhood knowing that that was going through.
But it required the same planning approvals as well?
It should have, yes.
Yes.
But I'm not sure it did.
Okay. And would you agree that, I guess the other thing I just want to understand is, do you think that what's being proposed is a significant, significant improvement over what's, what's there right now?
It would definitely be an improvement that, than what is there now, but I believe the applicants need to go back to the drawing board and put something that would actually fit on the, on that property and would complement the homes that are there.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further questions. Thanks very much. Next delegation is Esteban Balau. How did I do on the name?
It was close enough.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Sorry about my English, it's not perfect yet. I'm living in Dune Village Road four years now, and I am the closest neighbor to this new development, and I have concerns about. And first of all, the size. 4,700-square-feet house gonna really dwarf my 1,300-square-feet house. And I bought this house four years ago because of the village setting. And no any other house that size on that street. Until a couple days ago, I didn't even know, I didn't even think Oregon Court is part of the Heritage District. It's totally different, it's just part of the new subdivision behind. And also, I just want to comment for the applicants. They want to replace a 3100-square-feet building mass with a similar size. For me, 5,000 square feet is not similar to 3100. I'm not against building new houses, it's just, that's part of life. Old houses going down, new houses going up, new families moving in, there's nothing wrong with that. But if we have this Heritage, Heritage District, please keep it that way. That's why I moved there, that's why many people are living there, and keep it village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Richard Halblum.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and my neighbors from Dune. Reason, it, this outline of all the houses around, what is it, 1094 and 1112, these are all what they, what the planners call type A heritage homes, they're old stock. There are only about 18 old heritage homes along Dune Village Road. And that has to be kept in mind, the develop, the applicants somehow jumped the hoop and went to Oregon Court, pretending that that's Dune. Well, the planner here said, it's within the line of Dune. Those houses were built by monarch homes without heritage permit application. There was a mistake somehow that monarch was allowed to move those homes, or build those homes on Oregon Court, allowed to put in a sewer line, which again, was not required by Heritage District Plan. And that's something that could be looked at, and I can get more evidence on that fact. If, if the planner thinks it's within the district, therefore, it was approved, she can check all the building permits she likes. She'll find out it wasn't so. I bring that out only to go back to 1094. Again, and I, I admit that back in 1988, when this plan was drawn up, the house that is on 1094, it was not analyzed to find out it is a historical home. It was built by Mr. Huber back in the 18, late 1800s, and he was the owner of the shoddy mill, which was behind the house. The shoddy mill's gone now, but this... The shoddy mill's gone now, but this is still what remains of the house. And as all applicants, when you want to tear something down, they can find all kinds of reasons for doing it, such as, you know, the basement's leaking, it's always that kind of thing, and there's mold. But don't forget, even though in 1988, the city did not know that was a historic home, that information is on this photograph, 1916 home. There's all kinds of, you know, probably vinyl, whatever's on the place. And that's another factor to keep in mind, the current use, there's still two for-sale signs up. The current use of 1094 is not in accordance with the residential use. It's, the guy's got a landscaping company going, he's got three, four, or five trucks there all the time. And what Mr. Esteban, who lives next to 1112, brought out is the fact that he gets his big house next to him, but if you see, the plan for Dune requires a variety of lot sizes. And here we have Mr. Esteban's and the one that now is want to be widened for this, one of the two huge homes. And they are McMansions, you've heard that term before. And but so, out of the way for these two applicants, and they don't own the property yet, it must be conditional agreement of some kind. The two huge homes are only maybe 15 feet apart as they meet one another. I mean, you're getting, you're getting, sorry, 10,000 square feet on that spot, you can take five homes in immediate surrounding area that are no more than 10,000 square And that is what brings it to mind that this place, these two homes that are planned are out of kilter. It doesn't fit with the community. The community is made for modest homes, and that's in the plan, it's not referred to in here. It's in the plan. It's repeated, it's a rural area with a beautiful, it's in a valley, and beautiful natural area around Dune, fortunately. And what has always been said in the plan, we are not to build homes that are designed like a suburban home. And these are ultimate, as was what said, Hidden Valley-style homes. But that's not Dune, it's the community in Dune. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could go on, but...
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Halblum? Seeing none, thank you. Next delegation is Bruno Peachnene.
Hello, hello, members of council. My name is Bruno Peachnene, I'm a chartered accountant, and I grew up on Dune Village Road and bought a house there about a year and a half ago. It's my understanding that council will be deciding whether to approve or deny the demolition of 1094 and 1112 Dune Village Road, as well as the construction of two mansions on those properties. I'm here today to describe to you the tone and character of the homes in Upper Dune. I provided you with a chart depicting the size of the homes, the closely adjacent to proposed construction of the 5,000-square-foot McMansions. I refer to this sort of chart here of the homes that they're proposing. The measurements that came from here, I literally went around with industrial-sized measuring tape to see what the footprints of the homes were, were they one-story, two-stories, one-and-a-half stories, and then compared them to MPAC's assessments for some of the homeowners to get sort of an approximate size of the square footage. I also provided you with pictures of the 14 homes closest to the proposed construction, so you can visualize the tone and character of the street. As a background, the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation Plan is covered by Bylaw 88-17, and it designated what was known as the municipality of Upper Dune as a Heritage Conservation District. The bylaw was approved by the OMB. Section 1 of the plan outlines that the plan arose firstly to conserve the intrinsic rural and historic character of the village, and secondly, to ensure that new development did not destroy this character. One of the homes proposed has like a tunnel through it where you drive through the house to get to the courtyard to the four-car garage. Look at the pictures of the homes on the street, they're not even close to anything like that. Section 5.9 of the plan deals with the buildings covered by the plan. The first five pages of section 5.9 are included in my handout, just behind the chart. The policies with respect to the buildings are basically twofold. First, to conserve, maintain, and enhance the historic buildings. Secondly, to guide and design the new buildings so that it complements the historic district. Oregon Court is not a historic district, it's a suburban court. We have before us proposed a construction of two mansions. I think many people will agree, mansions are not likely complement to the historic district of Upper Dune. If you look at the pictures there, that's Upper Dune. Policy guideline states that the existing homes are not grandiose buildings smacking of flamboyant proportions and decorations. I think many people would agree that a 5,000-square-foot mansion with a four-car garage may be grandiose. Flamboyant proportions can be paraphrased as flamboyant in size. Again, 5,000 square feet, I think most people would agree, that's flamboyant. These are in Bylaw 88-17. These are terms used to describe what new development should look like in the area. If you take a look at my chart, I've gone to the houses three to four to the left, three or four to the right, and all across in front of this new development. And I've gone to measure them to see what is the square footage of the houses close by, and what is the square footage of these McMansions. So at the top are 1112 and 1094 are Dune. The lengths and the depths, I've just sort of made up to get to the square footage that they're proposing. So they're looking at a 5,000-square-foot two-story home and a 4,700-square-foot home. The house to the right of that home is 1084 Dune Village Road, and it's the biggest home of the 14, and it's 2,290 square feet. The average home on the street is 1,768 square feet. The smallest home is directly to the left of the development, and it's 1,344 square feet. So these homes, the biggest home on the street currently, you could put two and a half of them inside this current development. The smallest one, you can almost put four houses inside that mansion. Once you allow a 5,000-square-foot mansion on the street, who says the guy across the street can't sell their house and put up a 5,500-square-foot mansion? Where do we draw the line at saying, hey, this is enough? To me, we have homes on the street that are around 2,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet on some of the new developments that you've approved. I think 5,000 square feet... You deny the demolition and the construction of them until you come back with a better idea.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next delegation. Calvin Staples.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak with my members of council.
Mr. Staples had to leave at 9:00, and he asked if I could read his notes to council. It won't take, I'll do it quickly.
That's fine.
He lived, he lives at 1133 Dune Village Road, off to the corner of Oregon Drive and Dune Village Road. Beautiful house and a large lot. And speaking for Mr. Staples, good evening, members of council. I would like to take a moment and thank each of you for taking time this evening and beyond to thoroughly evaluate the changes that are occurring in the Dune Heritage community. Dune is a special part of Kitchener. If you have not visited yet, I suggest you spend some time down there before you make any formal decisions. I have lived in the region of Waterloo for approximately 10 years. I'm involved in the community as a small business owner, educator, and volunteer. The beauty of this region is seen in the variety it provides. The core communities across the region have their own distinct flavors. The farming community around St. Jacobs, the trendy area of Uptown, and the history of Dune all make our community unique. These are all different districts of our community, but in their own right are special areas that should stay their course. I believe each community should not lose what defines them, and any additions should be additive, not the theme. I became familiar with the Dune area approximately five years ago. My family and I moved into the new Dune area. We purchased a typical newer home in the Dune area, 3,000 square feet backing onto green space. The day we moved in, I went for a run, and I saw the house I currently live in and the rest of historic Dune. I returned from my run and said to my wife, "I saw the house we're gonna buy." Needless to say, it was not well-received at the time. However, the following weekend, my family and I walked through the Dune Heritage community on Dune Village Road, and we fell in love with the area and in particular 1133 Dune Village Road, which is where he lives. In less than two years from the day I first saw this home, we purchased it. Sure, we could have stayed in our current home and had a return on our investment, but the opportunity to be part of a community that has character, charm, and history, we could never pass up. Since we have moved into this home, we have met neighbors that will lend you a cup of sugar. In this community, you know your neighbors, and they have similar values. An example of the kindness and culture of Old Dune was seen many times in 2013, but two in particular stand out, the violent summer storm of July 2013 and the ice storm of last Christmas. Our little community had people without power, limbs down everywhere, and by the next day, without anyone asking for help, the community was collecting itself and checking on one another. The families that have lived in Old Dune ensure that the community is connected and It takes a special kind of person to live in a historic district. In my experience, my neighbors are people who wish to preserve the community. I could have purchased a newer home with all the bells and whistles, or could have positioned myself to seek a demolition at 1133 Dune Village Road, but I did not. The size of the home, I have a three-bedroom home that is 1,900 square feet, and I have three young children, is more than enough space. The lot is beautiful, and my children can run and play. Our homes in the Dune Heritage District are not objectionable or intrusive. In the 10-plus years I've been a homeowner, the experiences in Old Dune are unmatched. My previous homes never drew attention, even the bigger homes. It's the character of my current 1860 home that has people stop by and look at a home, ask questions, and feel comfortable being neighborly. I feel we continue to lose the character of Old Dune by neglecting or ignoring the heritage bylaws. There will be no historic community left. I'm not against any new build if the proper channels are followed, and if the new owners acknowledge the community they live in. I understand there is a desire to place, I'll finish it.
You have a minute.
The large home on these bigger lots, but that line thinking is directly counterintuitive to the bylaws of Old Dune. If someone wishes to build a large mansion of a home, they should build them in an area approved by the city bylaw and the community that supports this type of home. The region of Waterloo has many options for this type of home, however, it should not be in Old Dune. There's another, rest of the page, but I could submit this to...
All right. Thank you very much, and we can take it as a copy as well?
Yes.
Clerk will pick it up. Okay, the next delegation is John, sorry, there is a question. Mr. Halblum, a question.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to be quick with this question. Is this the house that we're talking about, the white house that is Mr. Staples' house? I just wanted to identify it.
It's on the back, I think it has a house number on the back.
It does, it does, okay. I just wanted to raise that as the house in question. Yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that council understood that that was the house. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to John Arndt.
Mayor's there, and councillors, my name is John Arndt. I am a past president of the North Waterloo Region Branch of the Architectural Conservancy of Ontario, ACO for short. ACO is concerned with the situation occurring in the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District, specifically the applications for demolition and building permits. ACO contends that the integrity of the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District is being challenged by these applications. There is a real possibility that Upper Dune Village will lose its small village atmosphere and sense of community in place. There are a number of issues that concern us. The rationalization used to justify the need for demolition permits, severance, and building permits appears to be somewhat of a stretch. With continuing normal maintenance and care over the years, the homes would not be in the condition described in the demolition applications. The size of the new sites and the area of the combined lots are out of character in proportion to what should be acceptable in this Heritage District. The proposed construction of a site of almost 5,000 square feet is almost three times the size of the average home in the community. There is a concern that the approval of these applications will be the wedge, allowing an open door to additional development in the village. There are some wonderful cottages and homes not listed on Kitchener's Municipal Heritage Register of Non-designated Properties, which may be candidates of future demolition to be replaced by single or multi-dwelling units to serve the growing population surrounding the village. Much of this need may be coming from a growing demand for student housing. There is a concern that a negative decision made here could have an effect on other Heritage Conservation Districts in the city. Let us hope that what is happening here is not the new norm, as how non-conforming older properties and new construction are handled in Heritage Districts. Citizens of Heritage Districts will have to be vigilant in not allowing the encroachment of declining heritage property standards, and be assured of due diligence from those that govern. The construction proposals, as outlined in staff report CSD 14-116, are contrary to the values of the families who created the Upper Dune Conservation District in 1988. These people and women had specific values and social objectives in mind for the district: a small village atmosphere, a sense of community in place, protection to preserve the local character of the village and to strike the neighborly qualities, a sense of human scale and personal contact, and participation in the future development of the village. Let's not disappoint these people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no questions. Now we'll go back to the proponents, Paul and Vince, if you wish to come back, and there may be some questions for you. And also, any further comments that you would like to make first? I do have some people in line to ask questions, but do you wish to make any comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, like, um, one point that keeps coming up is square footage, and it keeps coming up, and it keeps coming up, keeps coming up. And the one point I have to the square footage point is, any, if you have a 10-foot box, for instance, and it's only two feet away from you, it looks massive. But you put that 10-foot box, 10 feet, 200 feet away from you, it doesn't look so big. And that's what we try to do, we set it back, the house back 100 feet, to try to please the streetscape of that neighborhood. I mean, the other thing that was brought up was with height. There was, there's other houses there from 32, 33 feet in height, I believe. We're just at 34, so it's one foot higher, which is still within the zoning rights. We, there's allegations made that the houses were, are modern houses. We designed more modern houses, but by going to city staff, they recommend the changes, and that's what we did, was to make, we made the changes to make the house fit in more with the neighborhood. We got away from the modern look. Yeah, that's, I don't know if you have any comments?
No, no comments.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go, there are some questions here, I believe, but I also have, you, did you want to add something more? Okay, we'll just leave your microphone on in case there are questions. Questions of the delegation, though, councillor Ionidas.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't know if this was mentioned in your beginning of your presentation, are these homes that you guys are gonna be living in with your families?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Fernandez.
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions I have, because I know that these are still forthcoming. You are asking for a severance of these...
Yes.
Yes. And have you... You have not received that as yet?
No, we haven't applied for that yet.
Okay. You haven't applied for that yet. Are the lots not presently big enough to accommodate the houses that you wish to build?
The one house is, 1094 is, but what we've proposed and we're going to propose is to take some of 1094 to conform to the zoning, which is a 24-meter minimum, which is going to be, I think in my notes, it's going to exceed that even when we take away from 1094 for both properties.
Okay. So when you purchased the properties, were you aware that this was a heritage district?
It is a heritage district, but the houses are not part of, I guess, the Class A that they called it. It's not part of those 18 houses, or I don't know how many homes are classified under Class A, but it's not under the Upper Dune Heritage Plan as a heritage home per se. There is no heritage... There's no heritage value.
There's no designation on the houses, but you were aware of the...
Of the area, yes.
Of the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District?
That's correct.
And the rules and regulations around that? You were aware of that when you purchased?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. My understanding is that you are also sitting on a floodplain. Have you approached the GRCA and understand the permits and the setbacks that may be required?
Yes, both Paul and I have looked into that. I don't know, a little background between Paul and I, we both are builders. We've built a lot of the homes in the Dune area, so we kind of understand a little bit about setbacks and the GRCA and floodplains.
But you haven't... You haven't made your application yet to GRCA?
No, but we've looked into where the floodplains are and will be within those guidelines.
You'll be within their guidelines?
Yep, we'll be fine. Yes.
You said that you've been working with city staff to build a house that's complementary to the rest of the area, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are you basing it on Oregon Court, or are you basing it on the houses that are immediately adjacent to Dune Village Road?
There were some on Oregon Court, and there are some on the newer, I guess, from the newer applications that are being built currently. There, I think there's two of them right now being built. So a lot of the features are taken from those homes.
But are they the same size and mass?
No, sizes, no. I believe in the size are not, no. But we have to understand that 1094, like I said before, it's got 3,300 square feet right now of mass sitting in front of them. So that's not a small structure in front of them.
You're correct, but that isn't... That isn't a residential property. I mean, that isn't a residential building. That is a building that is...
Still is.
...in non-conforming to the zoning at this time. Okay. Thank you.
Right, sorry. And to answer their question, we did design it... We designed it with the neighborhood, and that neighborhood was based on the guidelines, and we designed it according to the guidelines. So...
Okay. Counselor Singh.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, and this question may come across kind of strange, but I still wanted to ask. So why there? Why do you want to... Why do you want to build there? I know you've said that this is for your personal residence, and respectfully, for why would you want to live there?
I personally, myself, have moved... When we immigrated to Canada at age of two, I moved into the Dune area back in the day. I've basically grown up in that area, not on Dune Village, but in that area. My whole family is within the whole Dune area. Father, grandmother list them, they're there. I would like to grow my family there. I have two young boys, and he's got young... My nephews are... He's my brother-in-law. We love... We live beside each other now in the Dune area, and we want to live beside with each other again in the next house, which is, we were hoping, in Dune area. This is where I grew up, and I love that area.
You guys are lucky you have that cohesive family. That's great. And the reason why I asked that, and you've helped answer my question as well, you understand that area well. You know the makeup and the feel of that neighborhood. And again, you don't feel that you're the type of structure and home that you want to build would deter away from the beauty and aspects of that community. In fact, it would probably enhance. Is that what you're saying?
I believe we're enhancing in at least three different ways. One, we're limiting a driveway. Two, we're removing a very displeasing-looking two structures that are there, at least two structures, steel shed and a white house that's... If you look at the demolition permit, you can't even walk into some of the houses that are there right now from the mold. I'm guessing it's the mold smell and whatnot. And three, we're setting it back, and we're not changing any of the streetscape, so...
And you made a point about the setback from the, you know, street front. You said the setbacks are far more than compared to the other residences on the street. So how... What's the makeup of the property? Is it on the hill, or is it...
It's fairly flat, I would say. Yes, it's a fairly flat, and then in the backyard, it slopes towards the creek. There's a creek in the back. So it's pretty flat.
Okay. And the other property that you were referring to, that's 3,400, 3100 square feet, that's more closer up fronting on the roadway?
1084 is actually set back right now at about, I'd say, 100 feet or so. 1112, the property adjacent to it, is right on the street. So we're going to eliminate that.
And you're trying to follow similar token?
Yeah, and lot size, everything, according to the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions, so thank you very much. Okay. It is now in the hands of the committee councillor. I wanted to just get a clarification, first of all. I think I was... Must have misheard. The two applications, the two properties, the recommendation from the staff was for approval, and both of them have been approved by the committee. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, yes. The two applications for demolition were recommended for approval by Heritage Kitchener.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, because I had heard something else that didn't make any sense to me. Demolitions, yes. Counselor Etherington, point of order?
I had some comments I wanted to make on this that might help with this, but...
What's the point of order?
Point of order is that the Heritage Committee most certainly did not approve these two plans. They did approve the demolitions, but they did not approve these houses. Now, the problem is, I think, that there was a mistake made because no appropriate motion was then made, and that's the point I want to try and address.
Okay. Well, let's try to get that clarified, and that's, I guess, perhaps where I was going from, and my misunderstanding was if we take 1094, and on the yellow sheets, the last sheet of our attached to the agenda, the permit for demolition was approved for 1094. On... Over the page for 1112, it's the same thing. Permit for demolition was approved by the committee. Correct. The recommendation of the staff in the... In the reports that are in front of us, the white pages that were part of our package, they were recommending approval for the permit of the construction, but they were not approved by the committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Through you, Mayor Zaire, that's correct. The committee made a motion to approve based on the staff recommendation, and that motion was defeated. No subsequent motions were made.
Okay.
But it was the belief of staff that the intent, which I think Counsel Etherington has spoken to as well, was that they did intend to refuse the application.
All right. So that's what I wanted to get clarified, and that's helpful, and then, so I was hearing two different things, but I was mixing up the demolition and the approval of the construction. So Counsel Etherington, something further?
Yeah, as this council's representative on the Heritage Committee, I just wanted to say that members of the Heritage Committee were crystal clear about their opposition to these two monster homes, and I joined them in that opposition. And so I have a little trouble with the report you were just referring to, which says the staff recommendations were voted on and were lost. That's fair enough. However, no subsequent motions were put forward on these matters, and as such, Heritage Kitchener has not put forward any recommendation for council's consideration. I think we're playing games there, where we say that heritage members express concerns regarding the size and suburban design of the proposed new building. No kidding. They were directly in opposition to them.
I understand that, and... But the fact remains that they did not take the specific motion, whether or not it was intended. And I think everyone understands that at this point in time, I think, but it is here for us to be dealt with at this point.
Yeah, that brought me to my next point, really, which was you're dealing with an advisory committee that really has a lack of understanding of these procedural matters, and I'm part of that. And that is why this was not done. And I wanted to ask the question, why that advice was not given to the committee at the time?
I think that's a question that you could deal with outside of this chamber. Had the recommendation been to refuse? Madam Clerk, I think that that is the recommendation that would have come forward. It's either approve or refuse, and so the refusal motion would have come forward, correct? Okay. So what I'm saying, for all intents and purposes, we understand that the... What the intent was at the committee, it is in our hands now to deal with both the demolition, which was approved by committee and is on our yellow sheets, and going back to the permit of construction as well for both properties. So we have to deal with them, one way or the other, approve or refuse. So questioner staff, Counsel Verbedevich.
Thank you, if I can. And so I hear what all the delegations have said this evening. I guess what I want to just better understand is where staff were coming from in making a recommendation to approve the application that was before us. And in particular, it's my understanding at least, that it was partially based on... Or I shouldn't say partially, it was fundamentally based on the actual, the Dune Village guidelines and the... And a number of other projects that have previously been approved as precedence for your considerations. So I just want to better understand firsthand from staff here as to what your rationale was.
Michelle?
Through you, Mayor Zaire. The staff position was taken, exactly as you said, based on the policies and the plan, as well as based on the precedents that have been set previously by Heritage Kitchener and council. To elaborate with respect to the Upper Dune plan, one of the comments we've heard the most is obviously about the size, and the plan does not regulate the square footage. It does regulate height, and it does regulate form, but it has very broad and encompassing language, such as terms like shall be similar, shall complement, shall be varied. So it is a very broad language that we're reviewing. The other concerns we've heard have obviously been to the style, and again, the plan doesn't regulate the style of buildings, but rather says we don't want to imitate the past, we want to construct new buildings that are of contemporary design and that fit within the neighborhood. So that was part of our basis for coming to an approval. The other part would be that we did sit down multiple times with the applicants and go back and forth on many different elevations to come to a position where we were willing to support, and that was also involved input from the neighborhood representative who had gone through the very initial elevation drawing and expressed a series of concerns, which we conveyed to the applicants, most of which were addressed in their plans that were submitted, but not everything was changed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, also a quick clarity from staff. So to my understanding, the final design of what the construction would be, that hasn't been finalized yet, or has?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, I believe the final design from the applicant's perspective has been finalized.
No, I'm talking about from the perspective of staff, not the applicant. I'm sure they know what they want to build, but from what council would be approving today.
Yes. So the design that's before council is final, and staff support that, subject to the conditions that were listed in our original staff report, and those conditions were intended to provide some flexibility for the owners to finalize building materials and building colors.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is similar to what you just said on the report, 3 dash, front page, 3 dash 1. So council is approving, would be approving the construction of the new single detached, but again, staff would still have privilege to be able to give comment on color, material, siding, setbacks, be reviewed and approved by heritage planning staff, so that can still happen and will happen.
That would be the recommendation of staff.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. I have no further speakers. So we'll deal with this... First of all, the demolition reports approvals, which are on the yellow pages from the committee. So I'll go to Counselor Etherington to bring those in. Just before you do that, Counsel Fernandez, are you just lining up, or you want...
I'm lining up for comments.
Okay. So Counselor Etherington, you want to bring the demolition forward? Because I think we'll deal with this in two phases, demolition and the approval of the So bring those... It's just basically to bring items... Second. It was just to bring forward from the September 30th meeting, number one, and from November 4th, number two. Point of order, though, Counselor Galway Seelock.
I'm just wondering if it should actually be done in the reverse understanding that Heritage Kitchener has approved the demolition, but if this council's will isn't to... Isn't to move forward with what's being proposed, I see it as being premature in approving a demolition of the current housing if we're not going in that direction.
I have no problem in changing the order.
I'd like to reverse it.
So that's fine. So let me ask it this way, then. Is someone prepared to move the staff recommendation of both properties as was part of the package, which is the approval of the permit of construction? Someone prepared to move that? Before we do, Mr. May, are you...
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I want to be very clear that what you should be considering is the recommendation on 3-1, and in that case, council should either insert approve or deny in the blank space. I think the reclamation that you were referring to was an original recommendation that went to Heritage Kitchener. So page 3-1, and you'll see there is a blank line where council would want to insert...
You're correct. I was looking at the full package that was for the date of the meeting, too. It's the Heritage Committee. It was a larger bundle. I was looking at that, but on 3-1 of our agenda today, it's in essence the same thing, but the conditions attached. Counsel Verbedevich.
Mayor Zaire, but can you just ask one further question of staff? Just so that we're all clear, what is the appeal mechanism associated with heritage applications once council either makes or doesn't make a decision?
Ms. Drake?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, I suppose depending on the scenario, there's different options. So if council does not make a decision tonight, and if they do not make a decision by the January 2015 deadline that I mentioned, under the Act, permits that have no decision are deemed to be approved. So a non-decision after a time period has elapsed would essentially be an approval. If council makes a decision tonight, for instance, if they made a decision to refuse, the applicant could appeal that decision to the Ontario Municipal Board.
Okay. And in light of the fact that staff have recommended the application, would we essentially be in a similar scenario as in the previous issue? So staff would not be able to defend council's position, and we would need to get external advice or external support to make our case in front of the OMB?
Through you, Mayor Zaire. Through you, Mayor Zaire, yes.
Okay. So I will now go back to ask if there is someone wishing to put, bring forward the motions, a motion on three dash one, which is either to approve or refuse. Go ahead, Mr. Counselor Iannidis.
I need more clarification on, what do you mean, three dash one? Are you talking about these ones right here?
Yes, yes. And there's a blank space there for us to either approve or refuse. And this is for the construction of the single-family houses as they have been proposed?
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, for approval?
Yes.
Okay, so it has been moved. Is there a second or for the approval? See, Councilor Singh. Okay, we're now dealing with the motions on three dash one, which is the approval to permit the construction of new single-detached dwellings for both properties. Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. The only clarification I need is the fact that a demolition for the one property has not been approved.
Neither of them have been approved.
They have both been, that's right, they have both been approved, okay. I just want to speak to this particular issue because it's very clear that the district, Heritage District designation designates what it outlines. The proponents of 1094 and 12, 1112, Dune Village Road, are fully aware of the fact that they bought in a Heritage District. They admitted that today, and they admitted it to me in a phone conversation. In that conversation, Mr. Bostangjen, I'm sorry if I pronounced it incorrectly, informed me that they were improving the neighborhood, which I said to him was a subjective comment based on what they wished to build. The buildings of these two houses do not follow the policies of the Heritage District to enhance the 5.9.2 rural and District Heritage, Heritage District 5.9.1, and the natural unaffected presence, which the plan and the design of these houses certainly do not follow. These are not modest structures by any means, nor do they complement 5.9.1 of the Heritage Policies, the present housing on Dune Village Road. Additionally, the representative had, the Heritage Representative of the Dune, Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District, had concerns related to the massing of these houses. We've heard from a number of residents tonight on the street that their concerns that the form, as outlined by Ms. Drake, that the form is part of the guidelines of these new house applications do not fit in with the neighborhood. I strongly recommend that we refuse the permit application of these two houses based on what we have heard tonight from the residents who have lived there, and by admission from Care and Tilt for over a century. We have to not allow the dilution of a Heritage District, because once we open that door, there will be a flood of applications, and we may as well not even bother with a Heritage District designation.
Okay. No applause, applause, chamber. Okay, there are two other speakers, Councilor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say briefly that if this council approves these monster homes, complete with multiple garages, in my opinion, it will tear apart this heritage area, and it will also turn our efforts to protect our heritage areas into an absolute farce. We either show we respect these heritage areas, or we should just abandon all efforts to protect them. You can't have it both ways. So I would agree that we should recommend refusal of these recommendations.
Okay, just to be clear, the motion on the floor is approval, so you would vote against it for that purpose. Then we would, if that flies, it flies. If it doesn't, then we'd come back for another motion. Councilor Gazzola.
Yes, I want to add to what the two previous speakers have said. Back in 1988, around that time, I was on the other side of the chambers when this was discussed, and there was considerable discussion took place. And the city fathers of that day set up here, I think it was the first Heritage Conserv- Conservation District. That's exactly what it says, Heritage Conservation District. It's intended to keep it as it was. These two homes that are being planned for here are nice-looking homes that would fit in the ward that I represent down in Hidden Valley, or even over in Deer Ridge. There are no doubt about them, they're very attractive homes, and I'm sure very functional and all that, but they don't fit in with this conservation area. And the problem here is, and I think it's been brought forward, is that once you start to go down the slippery slope here, then it's, the whole concept of Heritage Conservation Districts will disappear. And we have, we have several of them in our community, and in its, there are tremendous, there are tremendous things to have in a community. They really make a community stand out. You see this in many, in many large cities, where they have these special areas, and they're intended to be a special area in perpetuity. That's what, that's what the thoughts were when it was set up. And if we start to give in to this sort of thing, I'm sure it's easy to say, hey, it looks like it's an improvement over what is there now. That's not the concept here. We have a small community within our much larger community. When we, one of the principles that we talked about around this horseshoe with the new LRT coming in, and we're going to be looking at a lot of areas, and we said that the importance of maintaining the communities as we have them now is paramount. It's something that we have to protect, even though there will be really large changes with huge buildings and all that, but the importance, the integrity of the communities that exist, we need to maintain them. And if we do, if we go in this direction of approving this, we're starting down, and once you do it once, twice, rationalization the third time comes very easy, the fourth time, it's there. So I would, I would really urge council that if we really respect what previous councils have done, and they're, it's a good thing that they've done, we need to refuse this application.
Councilor Glenn Graeme.
Thank you very much. And on the one hand, I'd like to compliment the applicants for the desire to live in this area. Obviously, there's something special about it. I think that you've made some strides towards trying to work with the community, because there is something special, though. I think that this does not preserve the uniqueness of the area. I can't support it. I think you need to go back to the drawing table and say, you know, this is a Heritage District, so this home could be lifted and put in any community, but what is it about this community that we really do want? And if you look around, I don't think that it's matching up to the character, and I think that's the key ingredient that's missing. It's not just the size. The massing is one element, but I think that if people saw that there was some effort made to conform to the area, the design. And the city really has set the standards. We've set the policy in our bylaw, and we can't water them down. And it is a very low bar to say we're improving the homes that are existing there. That's not the standard we should be looking for. What we should be looking for is to say, this is a sensitive infill. An infill in another area, I would support, because if it's further away from other homes, that's fine. So in another area, this would be good infill, but in a Conservation District where there's a uniqueness of character, you don't want to set that kind of precedent, because then there's nothing unique at the end of it, and you're watering down your standards. So I do support the concept that you want to live in the area. I think that you want to be fitting in with that area. So if you want champions in your community to support you, if you want to be neighbors with these people, I think you have an opportunity here. Seize it, go back to the drawing board, don't go to the OMB. Look for an opportunity to do something, get it right the first time. Thank you.
Councilor Iannidis.
I understand this is a difficult, difficult motion that's been put forward, but I think if we have to look at this strictly as a, as a planning, and I keep hearing that this is going to open the door. Well, I think the door's already been opened when you have the one street that has all these same types of houses. For time and time again, that we should, especially when staff, heritage staff, have approved this. I mean, one sense we, I hear that let's not, let's keep, preserve the character. Well, I think, I think when you look at these pictures, there's a lot of different types of homes here. Like, they all look different to me. So I think you have to look at it basically in the planning principle, and when you look under the concepts of the staff had mentioned, you can't really look at square footage. We're not here to regulate the square footage. We're here to regulate the style, and I think that's what they have in plan. They've basically approved it in principle. So that's the reason why I'm putting forward the motion.
Okay. I presume we want a recorded vote on this. So the motion is, as you see it on page three dash one, to approve to permit the construction of both dwellings, 1094 and 1112, Dune Village Road. Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion is lost on a tie. I will take an alternate motion. Councilor Galway-Seelock, and if we, the alternate motion is, I believe, to refuse.
It's not.
And, well, let me just put it out there in just saying, if it were to refuse, and that too was lost on a tie, there would be no action being taken by this council, and therefore, it would follow what Ms. Drake had said, and sometime in January, the process could be dealt with. So Councilor Galway-Seelock.
Yeah, and I thought of that, because I figured we might be in the situation where it was, where it was a tie. And so I was trying to figure out how can we still deal with this and be sensitive to that timeline in January. And I think the best thing that we can do is actually defer the decision on this matter until the December meeting, the December council meeting, I don't know what the date is off the top of my head, 15th. So December 15th, and ask that staff work with the applicant to try and come forward with something of, something more compatible with what the community is requesting, and we can make the decision at that point, so that we're not in a situation where we haven't made a decision by January, and, you know, if there's no movement, we can make the decision at that time, but if we can see some movement between now and then, I think it's our best, because if we don't do anything, if we don't just defer it today, we're going to end up in a situation where we're going to have made no decision come January, and the application will automatically be approved. So I think this is the best way that we can attempt to move forward, to come to a compromise.
So your motion is to defer this matter until Jan-, December the 15th?
Right, to the council meeting, yes.
Okay.
And then that might also give an opportunity for, it may not be able to go back to Heritage Kitchener, but they, they should have a meeting, I would assume, before then? No, they don't, okay.
Is there a second or for the deferral motion?
I'll just leave it there.
Councilor Fernandez? Okay, it's debatable only as to time. Those in favor of the deferral? Opposed, that is carried unanimously. You understand what we've done now? Just to summarize, council has deferred the matter, so effectively has not taken a decision on it. We dealt with at council on December the 15th. If a decision is for the same basis at that point in time, the new council making a decision at that time, if it is approved, it's approved. If it's refused, it could go to the OMB, or no action at that point in time on December the, or January 20, 27, January 17th, it would automatically receive approval. So I would like to also take a motion of deferral on the items that we, related to the demolition. Councilor Galway-Seelock, Councilor Etherington, those in favor? Opposed, that is carried as well. We'll now deal with the Walter Street project, and Garrett Stevenson is here. He will make a brief presentation, and then Greg Romanek, the proponent, has a presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend on being quite brief tonight, and if it's agreeable to council, I'm just going to focus on updated information that is new since the September 15th.
Yes, please.
I figured as much. Since our meeting on September the 15th, the proponent has revised and has come up with a new building concept for this project, and what has been presented is now a five-story concept that has been developed with, so revised business planning on their end. What I thought I'd do is take you through the changes from the previous six-story concept to the current concept, and then explain the recommendation in my staff report.
Good.
The concept, the five-story concept is obviously smaller than the previous version. It has less floor space, and it comes in at an FSR of less than two, which fits into the proposed medium-rise, multiple residential land use designation that's proposed for the KW Hospital Secondary Plan. It also requires less variances from the proposed residential eight zoning, including an increased side yard from the previous version, where a previous 1.9-meter side yard was proposed adjacent to the property that is housed by King Edward Public School has been increased to 2.5 meters. The dwelling makeup size has changed. I understand that was a result of some business planning and some market analysis. The, they are proposing fewer, or sorry, smaller units totaling 34. What remains unchanged from the previous proposal to this proposal is that the one space, the one parking spot per unit is still being achieved, and as you may recall through the evolution of this application through various meetings, reliefs that were previously offered for landscape amenity and visitor parking have been dropped, and those are exceeded with this new five-story proposal concept. In my staff report, I have attached as appendix A and B, the appropriate official plan amendment and zoning bylaw which would implement the previous six-story concept. I remain supportive of that concept. I think that it offers an appropriate transition between the King Street West mixed-use corridor and the adjacent residential neighborhood. For, for the benefit of council, should you choose to support the five-story concept, I have also prepared an official plan amendment and zoning bylaw attached as appendix C and D to my report, and that report is CSD 14087, and that would implement a five-story development- implement a five-story development concept that is now being proposed. And there are some variations between the two. And if that level of detail is, is requested, I'm happy to go over that. The five-story concept is, it still represents what I think is a good development. I think it achieves a lot of the planning objectives that the six-story concept does, or did propose to achieve. But I, I remain supportive of the initial concept. Both of them are supported by provincial, regional, and city policies, and they represent good planning for managing growth. They are high quality, and they're going to provide an appropriate buffer between the King Street West Mix Use Corridor and the adjacent stable residential neighborhood. I'll, I'll remind you that this property is located within the Central Transit Corridor, within eight hundred meters of the planned Grand River Ion Station Stop, and within the Midtown Station Study area. This development does meet the interim direction policies outlined in the official plan for dealing with land use policy change, changes in advance of the completion of the parts work program. I'm, of course, available for any questions.
Okay. I don't see any speakers at this point in time, so we have two delegations. Terry Ross?
Hello again. This is another infill project that has piqued my interest. And that goes with what they have just said about reducing the size of the units and having thirty-four, thirty-four units now in the same size lot, but it's a lower structure. So it's not being geared towards housing, the type of people that you want in that neighborhood. It's right next to a school, and they've stated that, the King Edward School itself. And the, there was one report up there, or one of the pages earlier, that stated one parking spot per unit. Well, if you look at the report, it says twenty-four or twenty-seven for the units, and seven are for visitors. To me, that, that doesn't add up correctly, because you're supposed to have extra parking for visitors, not to be included in the units. So even though they've reduced the number of floors, it's still not going to match what we want here. Page sixteen of the attachment, number thirty-one I, states one space per unit. So again, that just conflicts with having spots for visitors. The appearance of the structure in the drawings that they supplied, it, in my opinion, it does not blend in with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is an older neighborhood, and we must respect what goes on there. One of the things I brought up earlier with the Victoria Park had to do with the affordable housing as well. We've all talked about it, that we need a percentage of homes geared towards income, and that's not being done at this location either. This really needs to be addressed. I'd like to see it addressed for this one. If it can't be done, it must be addressed for all future developments. There's one other thing they refer to in the, in the report, and it's section eight D dash six, number three, and eight D dash twenty, number three. They refer to an existing driveway at K C I being part of the, the development. The existing driveway at K C I, as far as I know, is down around on Glasgow.
No, this is a very small sliver at the back of one of the properties. It was an unusual, if I'm correct?
The sliver of property at the back is a landlocked location from King Edward School. The K C I.
Okay, we'll wait for, I shouldn't have spoken. We'll wait for clarification on that.
But yeah, there, there is a, it appears to be a driveway on Walter Street, and it's blocked off. But if you look at, there's, it's not in any of the information that you have. But according to the plans that I've been able to find, it's a, a previous parking location for a business on King Street. It has nothing to do with K C I.
Okay, we'll get clarification on that.
And the last thing is, again, it's going with any type of building that's going in that we're approving. We need to ensure that we're using employment from the Kitchener-Warloo region, because we, again, we want our dollars to stay in our area. Thank you.
There may be some questions. Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One simple question to Mr. Ross. When you say "we," who are you speaking for?
I'm on the email list for the, for the area.
But you don't live in the area?
No, I.
You're not in the neighborhood. You're speaking just for yourself. Am I correct?
I'm speak, okay, yes, I'm speaking for myself.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, Terry, for bringing up the, the point about making sure that we have some affordable housing, especially because of the location. And when I look at the conclusions here on the screen that you can see up there, it talks about being within eight hundred meters walking distance of the hospital and the Ion Station Stop. So I think what my question will be to staff is, is this a development that they see having some, or maybe even Mr. Romanek, when he steps forward, to ensure that there are some affordable housing units in there? Because I think you're, you're weighing on when you talk about that, especially along the Transit Corridor and in close proximity to the hospital and the school. So thank you for raising that issue.
Thank you.
Those are the only questions. Thank you, Mr. Ross. And in fact, not only is the, the day and the hour getting late, and I forgot to ask Greg Romanek to come forward first, it's getting late in the term, and therefore I hope that you allow me the second mistake that I've made tonight. Mr. Romanek, do you wish to come forward? Then we have one more delegation on this part. My apologies.
Not a problem, Mayor Zaire. And for all the good service that you've given our community over the years, and I too wanted to acknowledge that, because I think I've been around for a lot of it myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Zaire, members of council, staff, and residents. My name is Greg Romanek. I'm a planner with Stan Tech Consulting Limited. With me this evening are my clients and principals of Vanguard Developments Corporation, Paul Valentine and Tom Rackett. And also with me tonight is Matt Boland, architect from A V A Architects. Oops, there we go. We are here this evening with some new ideas relative to our last appearances before council and planning committee. Our objectives from the outset have been to realize and deliver to the city a well-designed, well-thought-out, attractive, quality apartment project that fits into the neighborhood and the area, and is viable from a business and market perspective. We feel we've realized these objectives with this proposal before you. We have genuinely listened, seriously considered to what we've heard from council and area residents, and we've made serious efforts to respond. Changes and adaptations we had previously made, in light of three meetings with area residents and feedback from planning committee and council and staff included, we had revised our proposal and withdrawn original application requests to reduce landscaped open space and visitor parking. We will now meet typical Kitchener M R zone requirements. We've, my clients have entered into an agreement of, in principle, with community car share, and will have a car share available on this site for tenants and other area residents when it's delivered. We've also researched and assessed other potential options to augment parking for tenants and visitors in this area. For example, the availability of nearby municipal parking. However, I wish to emphasize that we continue to believe that we will, and we will have adequate parking for, in terms of what's been proposed. We continue to believe that the initial proposed project did represent good planning, would have been compatible, and a good housing project for this area. However, because of time going by and further market assessment in response to input that we'd received, my clients have evolved their business model and feel that it's an appropriate evolution. And they've decided to modify the buildings, the building, proposed building in terms of the following. We are proposing to reduce the building height by one story. And the maximum height would be limited, there would be a reduction in the maximum height from twenty-one point four meters to eighteen meters, or from six to five stories. And I note it would be four stories relative to grade at the front and east side of the building. The side yard setback on the east property line will be increased from one point nine to two point five meters. We do propose to increase the number of units slightly from thirty-one to thirty-four. However, the number of proposed bedrooms would decrease from forty-eight to forty-three. Parking to be provided will remain the same at one space per unit, and twenty percent will be allocated to visitor parking. So yes, seven spaces allocated to visitors, twenty-seven to tenants. This is in accordance with your M R, standard M R zone requirements. We also propose to provide nineteen bike parking spaces, which exceed your requirements by four. This drawing illustrates revised building design, which we believe to be of high quality and containing design features reflecting the neighborhood. Obviously, there's the lower height, but also we're retaining the step backs at the front of the building. Rod iron, rod iron balcony details, use of window patterns, stone walls, yellow buff brick and canopies will integrate to other similar features in the area, and particularly with King Edward School, and fits within this neighborhood and, and relative to the, to the rest of the city. We note that the number of balconies has been increased, increased corresponding to the number of units. In closing, we would like to thank council, staff, and area residents for their comments and ideas that have been shared with us over time. We do support the direction and staff report, C S D fourteen oh eight seven, before you tonight. My clients definitely prefer and plan to proceed with the new revised proposal before you this evening, and as addressed on page two of staff's report, in terms of the revised amendments contained in appendices C and D. We urge your approval of this matter tonight. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There may be some. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, that you and, and your clients have done some significant changes here to this, to this building. One question, so can you give me a rough idea, or maybe a guesstimate of what your setback is, maybe from the sidewalk to the front door? Do we have an idea of what that is?
Yes, through you, Mayor Zaire. We, we are abiding by a, a four point five meter front yard setback. And obviously, as you know, you may know that's taken from the front face, the closest face of the building to the property line. Now, the actual, exact dimension to the sidewalk, I, I don't have that off the top of my head. But I mean, even based on what we're seeing on the screen in front of you, I mean, you could probably extrapolate that you, that might, it might even be closer to eight or nine meters from the actual sidewalk.
I apologize. I missed that last piece.
Sorry.
Because of my sneeze.
Yeah.
Is, you, you added something in there?
Just, just, I mean, according to the image in front of you, you can probably extrapolate approximately eight or nine meters from the, to the actual edge of sidewalk. So double what the actual setback is from the property line.
Okay. So from, so from the edge of the sidewalk to the front of the building is about eight or nine meters is roughly?
Approximately.
Okay. And then, of course, we have sidewalk and boulevard as well.
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
There was one question that I attempted to answer, but I think incorrectly, about the, the K C I driveway. Can you comment on that, Mr. Romanek?
Yes, if you'd just allow me one moment, Mayor Zaire. I think there might be a drawing in here that I can go to. Oh, there it is. If you can see on this drawing, the green area to the top right is King Edward School at the corner of Agnes and King. The three lots relative to our proposal would be the red shaded area immediately to the left of that. And then there's a blue strip that runs up from Walter Street up into the blue area that it's budding King. That blue strip is, in fact, a commercially zoned piece of land that is a driveway, going into an old abandoned parking area that doesn't seem to be used anymore, but is owned and associated with a commercial property on, fronting onto King Street. The K C I driveway would be within the blue area further over to the left, beyond a row of, of various housing units that extend westerly towards K C I.
All right. Thank you. Did, Mr. Garson, you want to speak to that?
Through the mayor. Mr. Romanek is referencing special policy number three in the KW Secondary Plan. That policy basically says, in, in more complex words, that there's two driveways there now, but the long-term vision is that only the driveway closer to K C I will be the permanent access, if any, to Walter Street for those King Street properties. That special policy and all of the special policies in the secondary plan will be reviewed. As part of that review, as we move forward with the secondary plan process as part of parts. So both the official plan amendments that are in front of you today recommend maintaining that special policy three. It's somewhat irrelevant for this project, and it will be reviewed under separate, separate process.
Okay. Another question. Counselor Fernandez?
I apologize. I'll be very quick. You heard what our delegation, Mr. Ross, twice tonight regarding affordable housing. It looks to me like you've changed some of the units and you've increased some of the bedrooms. Is that, is that correct?
There, there's definitely been a change to the unit mix. There has been an increase in smaller one-bedroom units. The number of two-bedroom units has been decreased slightly, but from eleven to nine, and there are no longer any three-bedroom units. It's interesting to the point, certainly we don't propose to have any subsidized or rent geared to income type of units in this building. However, I would suggest that the market orientation has shifted towards probably fair to say a more affordable type of product. And in fact, I think my clients started to explore that area and market option as a result of some of the discussion that happened at the September fifteenth meeting, and some of the feedback that was raised then, relative to this item and other discussion that evening at council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we go on, I've got one more speaker. I need a motion to extend the meeting beyond eleven o'clock. It needs to be unanimous for us to continue. Counselor Fernandez and Counselor Aynaidis. Those in favor? It is unanimous. We can continue. Counselor, but you don't have to talk too much. Counselor Etherington?
I'll let you get away with that one. Just one quick question, quick question. Sounding like I want my cake and to eat it too. Could I ask you, Mr. Romanek, the first building, I don't know if you've got a picture of that. I love the design of this building, and the residents wanted it brought down a story. You've brought it down a story. You've lost some of the design components. Is there any way of retrieving those, or is there no way of retrieving them with the five-story building?
I think my answer to that, Counselor Etherington, is that it, it is a shift. And I think the, and I'll let Matt Boland maybe speak to this as well. But the intent was to still maintain a very well-designed, high-quality building. And we, we definitely believe this is that. We can certainly take your request under advisement, because we, this project is still to go to site plan review and be considered in that process. So we're really not trying to finalize design tonight here, but that would take place in that process. Matt, do you want to speak to any of the other features of the existing building? Do you want me to pull it up?
Sure.
Through you, Mayor Zaire. And to- Through you, Mayor Zaire, and to, and to Counselor Etherington's comments. Yeah, sure. I mean, you can notice, I guess, I guess the one thing is, with this endeavoring, with this instruction from Vanguard to, to actually attempt to shrink down some of the unit sizes and, and bring down the development by a story, one of the big things is the massing and the appropriateness and the proportions of these brick massings, is by pulling it down, by pulling those down an additional story, and allowing us to have that, that sort of, I guess, more modern attic sort of story, which was on the previous development, which made up the sixth story. If we had have sort of pulled the entire development down, it would have, which we obviously played with and tried, what it does is it started to negatively affect the proportions of those, of those brick components that, that you can see there. So that was, I think, as Greg alluded to, it is something that we are going to be continually refining through our design development and construction documents, if we are successful here tonight. But that's really where the, the slight adjustment and, and also slightly more traditional aesthetic of the design came from.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no more comments, or questions rather. Counselor Verbanovich, you want to bring forward this motion?
[inaudible]
I, that's the third error. It's time to quit, right? David Harms, I'm sorry, David. Welcome, David.
Good evening, Mayor Zaire, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here again, and of course, we know it's been a long night already, so I'll try and keep my remarks brief. It is certainly encouraging to see the, the work that the developers have put into this, and I think we could also acknowledge the work that staff have done along the way in this process as well. It certainly wasn't our intention to be here the third time discussing this either. But we do know, going back to sort of the August 11 council meeting, when a number of the concerns raised by members of the community were, were sort of crystallized by council in their deferral, talking about six different areas of concern related to parking, the height of the building was one, the density, the number of units, and particularly the size and scope of the units within it. When we came back, the 15th of September for the council meeting, there was, you know, some adjustments to some of those things, but, but really none of the, the major issues were addressed, and I believe at the time, council had suggested then that they'd like to see this to be more of a collaborative process than, than one that was in conflict, to which, of course, we, we agree. In the period between the last council meeting and now, it didn't really seem that, that a lot was occurring. At about the midpoint of that, somewhere in the, the middle of October, we requested an update and to see if there was a meeting being scheduled through Counselor Etherington, and of course, we heard back from him, and then through, from Mr. Stevenson, that the developers were considering options, but no meeting or further public consultation had been planned at that point. And so it wasn't, unfortunately, until just this Friday passed that we received the new information, sort of close of business, 4:30 PM on the Friday afternoon, that, you know, we can see an image and not really much of the further details, also noticing that the number of the units are going up. And so in the short amount of time that we've been able to discuss with the neighbors, and there were sort of eight or 10 people here earlier, and most of which have, have had to leave this evening. But the main concern still being talked about is the reduction of the, the size of the, the units in it. The fact that it's right beside an elementary school, and there's no family units whatsoever in this building, no, no three, three-bedroom anymore, a reduction in the number of two-bedroom, and then an increase in the number of one-bedroom apartments that will be there. And so on a street that already has a fair amount of rental properties and nothing above two bedrooms, it seems, this is really going to sort of add to the issues around making this more of a, sort of, either a student ghetto, or, you know, just a bunch of young single people living there, and not the kind of diversity that is reflected elsewhere in the community. So all, all of that, all of that is to say is the, there are still some issues, what, what is happening is, their changes have been very encouraging, but it's, simply put, the, the main problem is that we just haven't had time to discuss it as a community or to be able to, to meet with the developers. And so with that in mind, we would just ask that, that we could defer this one more time in order to allow us the opportunity to be able to have that kind of consultation and collaborative process that was identified before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? I don't think so, so thank you. Now I will go back to Counselor Verbanovich.
Mr. Mayor, just before we do that, I guess, I would see if the applicant wanted to respond at all to the, to the residents' delegation before I bring it forward.
Are you referencing, as far as the deferral is concerned?
Well, any of the comments made by the delegation.
Very quickly, Mr. Romanek.
Just very briefly, the amount of effort and research firstly, and then time and effort that was spent to shift the direction of the building was significant, it was very significant. In fact, a lot of the, you know, details of the, the new revised scheme really did start to just gel and come to fruition only over the last couple of weeks. I think that combined with our sense that we were moving this in the right positive direction relative to all of the concerns we'd been hearing from council and the neighbors, and in discussions with staff, you know, it just, it just didn't feel that we were going to be able to build something like this in, and it, and the timing just did not work. And we did agree with staff that we would communicate changes through written communication with the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
So you're bringing forward, it's 8D dash one?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, the original, or the revised recommendation, rather, as presented on pages two and three of tonight's agenda.
Well, actually, it's 8D dash one through three is the report with the bylaws and so on attached. Okay. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, I appreciate that the, the applicant has done significant changes to this concept. I am disappointed to hear from the residents that they didn't find out. Mr. Romanek just indicated that a couple of weeks ago, that the design concept kind of gelled. I'm not sure what the gap was, and why there's, you know, a few weeks ago would indicate to me two or three weeks. I don't want, I don't really want to defer this, I think that, that you have taken the time, but I really would like to see, you meet maybe one more time with the residents and see if there's anything that you can do to maybe add one or two three-bedroom units into this. I think, I think you're moving in the right direction, and I'd like to see it moving that way, but you've done a great job of working with the residents, I think you just need to take that one additional step. If we approve this tonight, in good faith, to work with the community, to know that you're going to have good neighbors, I'd really like to see you do that.
All right, there are no further speakers, motion is on the floor. Those in favor? Recorded votes been called for. That's correct, as I've said, if you had 8D one. Those in favor, well, actually, it was unanimous. Very good, thank you very much, everyone. We have two more delegations. First one is Harold Drewitz. Welcome, Harold. Want to make sure I welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Shortly after I picked up the voters' list in early September, I checked our own household. Much to my surprise, it was wrong by 50% in that it included a daughter who moved out of the city in 2004, and another one who left the house in 2006. The CFO and I had a chain of emails, the replies to which leave me baffled. Why would the initial list come from MPAC and not from Elections Ontario? As time went on, I received all kinds of phone calls and emails from voters asking when they would receive their voters' cards. They said, quote, "The city can send me my tax bill, but not my voters' card," end of quote. I did phone the city clerk and received no later than date. The voters' cards began arriving a lot later than what I was told. By the way, we got our voters' card a lot earlier from Perth County than what we did from the city of Kitchener, and we could vote via phone or computer. Some people did not get their voters' card until after the advance polls were closed, while others did not get a voters' card, even though nothing in their status had changed since the 2010 election. After some research, I found a Voters List Options Report from Toronto dated June 2007, and an AMCTO discussion paper dated January 30, 2012. In this report, it even lists the city of Kitchener as a municipality with significant additions and changes to the list. Both of these reports indicate it is possible to get a voters' list from Elections Ontario. So why didn't the city of Kitchener administration do so? Bless you. The other piece of the election process that was missing with the capability of candidates and the shootneers get info at the polling stations for the GTO TV drive. I found this unbelievable. In conclusion, I'm saying administrations should be able to get a much more complete and accurate voters' list. This is so fundamental to our democracy, and there are just too many errors. Thank you.
Okay, I'll deal with questions to the delegation, and then you can take your seat, and our clerk will make a comment. Counselor Fernandez?
Actually, I don't have a question of Mr. Drewitz, because I've had a conversation with Mr. Goodey, one of our clerks, and there's some information regarding the review that's going to be happening, and some of the processes, so I just wanted to let you know that that's moving forward.
Well, you knew when the voters, when the election was going to take place, and I don't know why that didn't happen prior to October 27, 2014.
We're into questions now.
I'm sorry?
We're into questions of you, that was a statement, and there wasn't a question. So I'm going to move on. Counselor Glenn Graham?
Thanks, Mr. Drewitz, for coming in and raising this important issue. You, you made a point about some kind of other list or TV, one of your last points, I'm sorry, I just missed it. If you could expand on some kind of...
The discussion paper?
If that's what it was, if you could just read that again and expand on what that was and explain.
I have a discussion paper from the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks, and Treasurers of Ontario, that was done in January 30, 2012. Am I answering your, am I answering your question?
I'm sorry, I can't remember, there was something about TV in there, and I just...
Oh, GeoTV, get out the vault!
Sorry, GeoTV, I missed that, okay, sorry. So if you could reference the clerk's report, the first thing you said? The clerk's, the report that you just alluded to?
No, I didn't, I didn't reference the clerk's, I, I didn't get that.
Okay, is that something you would like to, to mention?
I didn't get the clerk's report, so I don't know what it entails.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay, fair enough, sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Drewitz? Okay, thank you, Harold. Ms. Tarling? Yeah. It's okay, Ms. Tarling is going to comment, and then we'll go to the second delegation.
Mr. Drewitz is correct that the voters' list that we receive through MPAC, we here at City of Kitchener and other municipalities have perennially had difficulty with receiving an accurate and up-to-date voters' list. It is something that municipalities have been dealing with for quite some number of years. I am aware of the discussion paper from AMCTO wherein they do recommend or suggest a number of different options with respect to how that could be dealt with. We, along with a lot of other municipalities, were anticipating issues with the voters' list, and so we did undertake to acquire a third-party software, and we are in the midst now of trying to create a voters' list through information from MPAC and other sources that will help us going forward to be a little bit more up-to-date and more accurate with respect to the voters' list.
Okay, Counselor Gazzola, we have one more delegation.
Yeah, I know, the only question I have, I think it's of the clerk of council, I, I trust that we're going to, that council's going to have an opportunity to talk about this issue in near future.
Yes, I was, I was informed that there was going to be a report coming back, I don't know the date, though, Christine?
A date has not yet been established.
But it's going to be in the near future, we're, we're not going to leave it till 2013, 2017, or anything like that.
Or even 2018, no, it will be coming back, probably later this year.
Yeah, I have a number of issues, but I will save them till then.
Thanks again. Something that Harold said clicked with me, too. I realized I had a child listed on my list that came to the house. She hasn't been there for eight years, she's now married and living north of Listowel. So yeah, lots of the concerns, voter cards that were missing, complete locations, example, the Iron Horse Apartments on Queen Street, over 300 units there, nobody got their cards. They had trouble making contact with the clerk's office by phone in the last few days leading up, especially Election Day. They had gone to their previous location, Mill Courtland, and to be told that they didn't vote there. So there was a number of upset people. Other things were the marking of polling stations. One instance is Carmichael School, you couldn't see the signs from the street, you could also not park on the street because it's in the St. Mary's Hospital area, and you have to have a special permit, so that really upset quite a few people. There was also lots of instances where there was no room in the parking lots, again, Carmichael School is the example, they only had about five spots out in the front of the unit. And I'm just wondering, were the results based on the actual number of voters, or the number of cards that were sent out, and how many people did not get their cards? Also, I have printed out in, and everybody has a copy of an email from a worker at, at one of the polling stations. I removed her name from it for here, but the clerk does have it. So she states, "I worked in Ward Six as a ballot clerk. I'm writing because I don't think what I saw on election night Monday after the polls closed was right. Our group was following procedure by counting our unmarked ballots and taking down signs, etc. I was called over to the ballot scanner and asked to do something that hasn't been sitting with me since. Some background, our scanner did not work for the first few hours of the day, and no matter how we told voters to mark the ballot, the machine just didn't like what it saw and was rejecting lots of ballots. We eventually got a new scanner, and everything worked well. Back to the end of the night, I was asked to go to the area of the scanner, and when I got there, the ballots that were submitted manually in the morning, the ones that the scanner didn't like and were manually placed through the slot..." scanner didn't like and were manually placed through the slot, were sitting on a table. I was asked to take half the pile of ballots, and where the boxes were marked, color them in fully with a marker. And after doing so, they were handed over and fed through the scanner again, and most of these worked and scanned through properly. I asked that this was okay and was told it was. However, I do not think it was. What if I marked an extra box? What if I spoiled the ballot? Was I really to be seeing all these private ballots out in the open? And it has been bothering me ever since, and I thought I should write a note. Let me know if you need more info, and you can email me at..." And she provided her email address. So, based on that attached email, I'm just wondering, at the end of the night, the ballots that were not read were removed, and the workers were asked to fill in the boxes, and they were sent through the scanner again. So, the private votes were seen by unauthorized people. The ballots could now be spoiled because of this action. And what if the box was filled in that was not originally there? And what if these balance or percentage were not filled in by the voter, but by someone else, and these were added to the list to promote someone else's agenda? So, how can we have confidence in these results here at this station or across the city? And with so many inconsistencies, would some of the elected actually have the correct amount of votes, especially for locations that were close? I am concerned, and this must not remain hidden, but we must have a public report, and I'm glad to hear that one is going to be happening. In conclusion, it's no wonder we have such a low voter turnout, when people do not get their cards. They show up at the location from two thousand and ten and are told they cannot vote there, and it's so challenging to vote. People just say, "Forget it, and it doesn't matter." So, for the future, with the voting cards, they must arrive very early. We must confirm delivery. We have a lot of people who want to vote, but there's also a lot of people who get frustrated because it's not easy for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Any questions? Councillor Glenn Graham?
Thanks a lot, Terry, for coming in. Do you have a suggestion, a recommendation, about how early the voter cards should come?
Sorry, I can't hear this.
Do you have a suggestion about how early the voter cards should come to people?
So, prior to April twenty-seventh? Yeah, by August thirty-first. That way, it can be noted on the city's website, the Facebook, the Twitter, your cards are being delivered. If your cards do not arrive, please contact the clerk. If you ask your friends, "Did your card arrive?" We have to make sure we get more people out here.
And in terms of places that have parking, it seems that you're saying that we should have places where there's lots of free accessible parking. Is that right?
Correct. And that also brings up a, I missed one point on here. There were other locations that there was a lot of parking, however, the people had to walk completely around the building to get to the polling station. And that's because of the new restrictions that are in at schools, the safety. But we gotta, we have to work this out. We can't restrict people. People do want to vote, but they do want to vote easy.
Thanks a lot for your interest in this.
Okay. Seeing no more comments, thank you. Okay. We will move on. We have a number of other unfinished items on our agenda. We now turn to item six, no, eight A. This is the eighty-two Weaver Street East. It's moved by councillor Rubenovic, seconded by councillor Davie. Those in favour? Opposed? That's carried. Eight B, seventy-four Beamer Street, retaining wall issue, moved by councillor Davie, seconded by councillor Ionidus. Those in favour? Okay. Sorry, I didn't see your name up here. Councillor Glenn Graham?
Thanks very much. I'd ask for a deferral of this. The gentleman here is interested in coming before council, but he was unable to tonight. So, with respect, I think it would be helpful if we did defer this, since there's no penalty or disadvantage to deferring it. I would ask that it be deferred until the gentleman is able to make arrangements to come to council.
Councillor Davie, a point of order?
It's, the recommendation is to be received for information, so there's nothing really to defer, other than that we've received it.
Okay. That's on eight B. I have to go back to it again, just to double check.
My concern is that if we pass this, that we're depriving him of an opportunity to speak to the issue.
I'm just looking, just take off for a moment, please. Eight B dash one, actually, there was no motion. It was there for information, so council is really not taking any specific action.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Was that your point? Okay. Thank you. Mr Whitmer? Now, we'll go to eight E. This is the economic impact, the impact analysis for EDIF. That's what you're, you want to speak to it as well? Okay. Your name was still up. Okay. Those in favour? Opposed? That's carried. We'll now move to the balance. Reports of the committee, yes. The reports of the committee, and it is Finance and Corporate Services Committee, councillor Davie.
Thank you. One moment. It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Rubenovic that the six items for Finance and Corporate Services be adopted.
Councillor Gazola?
I would like item number five to be dealt with separately with a recorded vote.
Items one, all of those items then, except for number five. Those in favour? Opposed? That's carried. And number five is related to the termite treatment loan application process. Recording vote has been called for. Those in favour? Stand, please. Those opposed? The motion carries. Councillor Etherington? There are a couple of remaining, councillor Etherington? Couple of remaining heritage items? Well, we still need, on September the thirtieth, we need number two. Can you put on your microphone, please? September thirtieth, it's number two, and which, the reminder there that there was not a quorum president of the committee at that time, as well as November four, number one.
So, I'd ask council to vote on items number two of the meeting, September thirtieth, and number, sorry, Mr Mayor, number...
Number one.
Number one of the meeting of November fourth.
Okay. Seconded by councillor Fernandez. Those in favour? Opposed? Any new business? Any questions? It's been moved by councillor Glenn Graham, seconded by councillor Rubenovic, that the bylaws be given first reading. All in favour? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by councillor Fernandez, that council resolve itself in the committee of the whole. All in favor? Oh, it wasn't on my list, so, bylaws. Can you tell us about the bylaws? The additions?
Yes, four of them. An OPA and a zone change for one hundred Victoria, and an OPA and a zone change for Walter Street.
Okay. Just take that vote again, for the record. Those in favour? Opposed? That is carried. Now, we'll go into committee of the whole. Councillor Fernandez?
Items one has been dealt with, so item two is the Dangerous Dog Designation Appeal. Sorry, bylaws of the second reading, I apologize. Bylaws for second reading. All those in favour? Opposed? None? That's carried. All right. So, going to the items on the blue pages. Number two, the Dangerous Dog Designation Appeal. All those in favour?
Sign variances. Number one.
I apologize. I thought these were approved, the sign variances were approved already? Two was. Okay. So, going back a little, is that sign submission for twelve sixty-eight Victoria Street North? Right. Moved by councillor Ionidus. All in favour? That's approved. Back to number two, then. The Dangerous Dog Appeal, we'll try one more time. All those in favour? Oh, councillor Ionidus moves it. That's carried. And item three has been dealt with. So, the moving...
Committee rises and reports?
Committee moves and rises and report. The proceedings and the recorded procuring carry interest in conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held the state as attached here, too, and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favour? Opposed? That's carried. And it's moved by councillor Glenn Graham, seconded by councillor Rubenovic, that the bylaws be given third reading. All in favour? And it has been moved by councillor Glenn Graham that this meeting be adjourned. And let it be known, the mayor has left the building.